sea pero la expresión es lo que nos va a librar, es lo que va a dejar que podamos conectar con cada uno. Es lo que nos conecta con gente de alrededor del mundo, es lo que forma solidaridad, ¿no? En toda la opresión que ha pasado alrededor del mundo siempre se ha visto y se ha quedado en el récord por el arte y la expresión de la gente, ¿no?
Arte siempre ha sido una forma de resistencia y debido al arte, ya sea fotografía, pintura, poemas, hemos podido aprender sobre las diferentes crisis que han impactado a nuestras comunidades en el pasado y las diferentes formas en que la gente ha resistido. Así que este arte aquí que tenemos hoy y el tema de él, ¡Viva la Resistencia! es dar luz a lo que tal vez la gente no puede ver en este momento, que es cómo se ve resistir en un momento de arte. El arte cuenta la historia, cuenta la historia de generaciones anteriores para que también ayude a inspirar a las generaciones futuras a luchar y resistir de cualquier manera que sea beneficia para ellos.
Lanzar algunos pueblos sin servicio es aún más importante durante la temporada de regreso a la escuela. Un miembro del consejo Kern Price se unió al Network de Niveles Especiales para el 20º año de ayudar con recursos y suministros necesitados.
Estamos aquí hoy para el 20º anual evento de regreso a la escuela, patrocinado por el Network de Niveles Especiales y Kern Price. Estamos aquí compartiendo excelentes recursos para la comunidad, recursos necesitados para la comunidad, no solo para la comunidad de discapacidad, sino para la comunidad en general. Tenemos recursos de la ciudad de LA, el condado de LA, cada departamento posible. Y el gran bono del día es suministros y bolsillos.
Este es un programa que estamos emocionados de hacer con el Network de Niveles Especiales, contactar con la comunidad, proporcionar recursos porque principalmente nuestra comunidad está desaparecida. Especialmente cuando hablamos de espacio verde, espacio abierto, la importancia de buena comida saludable. Hay muchas organizaciones basadas en la comunidad, organizaciones no lucrativas que están haciendo un trabajo tremendo y necesitamos levantarlos.
Estos son áreas que obviamente son áreas sin servicio de la ciudad. Hay una alta necesidad de todos los tipos de recursos. Este es un desierto de alimentos aquí, así que hay recursos de comida maravillosas también y muchas agencias que la gente puede ir cuando necesiten cualquier tipo de servicio social en esta ciudad.
Necesitamos cuidarnos mismos, siempre tenemos que asegurarnos de obtener la ayuda que necesitamos y tenemos que ir a todos los servicios que podemos y llevo a mi bebé a todo lo que pueda, ¿sabes?, para que pueda obtener toda la ayuda que necesita. Así que cuando me dijeron sobre este evento, dije "estamos ahí".
Bueno, una cosa es ser consciente de los recursos disponibles, saber cuán importante es comer saludable, hacer ejercicio. Hemos hecho algunos aportes emocionantes aquí en South Park para que la gente pueda disfrutar del espacio abierto, disfrutar del espacio verde. Así que queremos destacar eso, celebrarlo y asegurarnos de que esté disponible para nuestros residentes.
La señal de la LAX entra en almacenamiento para las actualizaciones de carreteras. Sin impuestos sobre el adopción de perros y gatos mayores en septiembre. Y el Bureau de Iluminación de la Ciudad celebra un siglo de iluminación de LA. Estas historias están por encima en City Beat.
Las letras anfitriones que anotan la LAX, que han servido como señal de bienvenida para los viajes, están siendo removidas y colocadas en almacenamiento por el Lado Mundial de Los Ángeles, Lawa. Bajo el programa de modernización del aeropuerto y terminal, Lawa está actualizando las carreteras para separar vehículos aportados desde el tráfico local a la calle Sepulveda. Según Lawa, el proyecto incluye mejoras de paseos, mejor iluminación y más acceso directo a la pista económica de la LAX. Con la expectativa de completar en 2030, Lawa dice que la LAX permanecerá operacional durante la FIFA World Cup 2026 y las Juegos Olímpicos y Paralímpicos de 2028. Las letras de la LAX volverán en un área relocated después de que se completes las actualizaciones. Para más información, visite lawa.org/news-releases. La ciudad de la Animal Services ha colaborado con la Pet Care Foundation de Paula Kent Mihin para ofrecer impuestos de adopción fijos durante su evento Big Dogs and Grown-Up Kitties. Este evento de adopción es para perros médicos y grandes y para gatos adultos que son más de un año que forman la mayoría de los animales en los shelters de LA. Tu nuevo amigo rústico ya estará lavado, neutrado, vacunado, licenciado y microchipado. El evento de adopción de Big Dogs and Grown-Up Kitties se lleva a cabo el 30 de septiembre en seis shelters de animales de la ciudad de LA. Para más información, visite laanimalservices.com. El Bureau de Iluminación de la Ciudad de la ciudad de LA está celebrando su 100º aniversario con la lanzación de una nueva plataforma online que mapea la historia de las luces de LA. Según el Bureau, el mapa interactivo proporciona la ubicación y contexto de las luces de calle históricas y decorativas en toda la ciudad. Además, el Bureau dice que la plataforma online visualiza el crecimiento de la ciudad a través de la evolución de la diseña de las luces de calle. El mapa online marca diseños de luces de calle notables y su ubicación aproximada de los primeros siete máscaras de luces de calle de LA datando de 1882. Para más información, visite lalights.lacity.org.
Brushando con la acción de la comunidad, los Angelenos de Pico Union se pusieron ocupados en una limpieza local. El oficina del jefe del alcalde, los cadetes y cerca de 50 jóvenes adultos eligieron darle back y beautificar el vecindario.
Estamos emocionados de tener una limpieza de la comunidad aquí en la calle Pico. Hay unos 50, 60 niños aquí, los cadetes de LA están aquí, la biblioteca pública de LA está aquí, nuestro oficina del jefe está aquí.
Creo que es muy importante para los jóvenes actuar en su comunidad y creo que beautificar su comunidad muestra mucho amor, aumenta la participación de la comunidad y hace que las calles se vean más bonitas.
Personalmente, elegí decidir hacer la limpieza de la comunidad, ¿sabes? Es porque creo que a veces las lugares necesitan. Honestamente, creo que es realmente importante. Lo veo como una forma de devolver algo al mundo. Y otra razón, horas de comunidad.
No puedo decirte cuántas veces he hecho limpias, pero la gente llegará y te agradecerá y a veces entran, lo que es lo que queremos. La pride de la comunidad es tan importante. Esto es por lo que estamos haciendo, limpiar nuestra comunidad y hacerla brillar. Una de las mejores cosas sobre una limpieza de la comunidad es que puedes reunir a la comunidad y vecinos. Muchas veces, como sabes, en Los Ángeles nadie conoce a su vecino. Así que estas limpias de la comunidad son realmente la mejor manera para que nos reunamos con nuestros viejos amigos y nos encuentremos con nuevos amigos y extendamos nuestra comunidad y hacemosla mejor.
La biblioteca fue invitada a ofrecer tarjetas de biblioteca a todos los voluntarios aquí y creo que es muy importante para ellos se familiaricen con que hay una biblioteca en su comunidad.
Get people involved with reading and the literature and the wonderful things that the library has to offer.
No dejes cosas en el suelo porque es malo para el medio ambiente. Ya tenemos polución, no necesitamos eso más. Tenemos cosas en el agua, dañan a los animales y eso es malo en general.
Si necesitas más información sobre eventos futuros, puedes encontrarlos en nuestro sitio web en lapl.org.
¿Qué podría ser mejor que música live? Después del éxito del inaugural Festival de Jazz de la semana pasada, un miembro del consejo Tim McCosker se unió al Harbor community para el segundo anual Festival de Jazz de la Ciudad de Harbor.
Es un gran día en el 1-5. Estamos en Harbor City. Estamos en Ken Malloy Regional Park, justo en los bancos del lago Machano para el segundo anual Festival de Jazz de la Ciudad de Harbor. La última vez fue un gran éxito, nuestro primer, este año aún más grande y mejor. Vamos a ir todo el día y tener buena música jazz, buena comida, buena diversión con la comunidad entera, pero es aquí en Harbor City.
Juntos representamos Watts y Harbor Gateway y Wilmington y San Pedro y aquí en Harbor City. Estamos aquí para Harbor City.
Hay muchas personas agradecer a, todos nuestros patrocinadores. Teníamos muchos patrocinadores este año que hicieron que esto fuera más un éxito. Así que queremos agradecer a todos ellos, pero lo más motivador que alguna vez hicimos fue empezar.
La música es el arte y los artes traen a la gente juntándose, especialmente en un momento como este en el que nuestro país y nuestras ciudades están pasando por diversión, actividad, comida y celebrando el uno con el otro, la comunidad. Y esto es lo que es todo sobre y estoy feliz de estar aquí y de ser parte de ello.
En el 1-5 tenemos eventos en todo el distrito, desde Watts hasta el frente del agua y tenemos estos importantes eventos de verano especialmente para que podamos activar nuestros parques. Es tan importante traer a la gente al parque para que puedan divertirse y tener actividades saludables para la familia entera. Así que algo como esto es libre de venir. Hay oportunidades para la comida, hay oportunidades para jugar. Tenemos un área de jugueteo, tenemos un área adulta donde pueden tomar un bebé. Este es un modo de activar los parques y mantenerlos seguros. Así que aquí en Harbor City queremos asegurarnos de que estamos activando nuestros parques y teniendo eventos que sean divertidos y saludables para la familia entera.
Preservando el pasado e iluminando el futuro, un nuevo exhibe en El Pueblo recorre a las familias que han estado en el corazón de la área durante más de 100 años. Muchos que comenzaron en el negocio tienen descendientes todavía allí. Así que la historia de El Pueblo también es su historia de familia.
Hoy es un día muy especial porque después de muchos, muchos años de discusión estamos abriendo el exhibe de comerciantes. Se titula "Preservando el pasado, iluminando el futuro". Este es uno de los primeros esfuerzos para asegurar que tenemos un espacio museo permanente que represente la historia de los comerciantes de la calle Olvera.
Todos amamos la calle Olvera, pero no siempre se dan cuenta de toda la herencia y todo el trabajo duro que varias familias durante casi 100 años han puesto en nuestro espacio histórico. Y así por primera vez en Olvera Street, habrá un espacio para que veas y experimentes la historia de todas las familias aquí. Tenemos artefactos relacionados con los comerciantes de la calle Olvera, fotos históricas increíbles y estamos muy felices de recibir al público. Esta ha sido una colaboración entre la Asociación de comerciantes de la calle Olvera y la Fundación Getty, así que también somos muy afortunados en que nuestro interno Getty Marrow para El Pueblo fue tasa de ponerse en conjunto este museo y ha hecho un trabajo increíble de poner todo esto juntos. Olvera Street no sucedió de repente hace 100 años. Hace 100 años, gracias al trabajo duro de la señora Christine Sterling y las trabajadoras mexicanas estadounidenses en Olvera Street, realmente se reunieron para crear un marketplace que celebraba la herencia de Los Ángeles. Comenzó primero con la histórica Avila Adobe, la casa más antigua en la ciudad. Cuando fue salvado por la señora Sterling, realmente triggered el necesidad de tener un espacio que celebre tanto la historia de LA como la de México y la cultura de Latinoamérica.
A la parte de atrás del exhibe tenemos videos jugando. Como parte de esos videos hay entrevistas de historia oral que hemos llevado a cabo con una docena de comerciantes. Nos sentamos en la Avila Adobe justo a la calle y hablamos con muchos comerciantes sobre sus familias, sus vidas, sus historias. Al final, preguntamos a cada comerciante en el final de su entrevista: ¿qué significa Olvera Street para ti? Y es tan hermoso que casi todos dicen "familia". Para ellos, Olvera Street no es solo un lugar donde vas, ¿sabes?, para comprar cosas, es una familia.
Saber que tenemos descendientes de esas familias de la calle Olvera todavía aquí y es algo que, nuevamente, todos nosotros deberíamos celebrar como parte de la herencia de LA.
Cuando estudias la historia local, te das cuenta más de quién eres como persona y internalizas eso porque se convierte en parte de ti, ¿sabes? Incluye a todos nosotros y una vez que entendemos que somos parte de esa historia, cuando sentimos ser parte de nuestras mayores comunidades, ahí es donde se vuelve muy especial, cuando podemos romper las límites. Así que para nosotros, y especialmente para mí, se trata de asegurar que sabemos quiénes somos para que podamos ser mejores para el otro en una mayor comunidad, especialmente si es como Angelenos, como californianos o realmente generalmente como estadounidenses.
En esta semana's historia principal, recordando el 11 de septiembre. Tres de los cuatro vuelos en el ataque fueron destinados a la LAX. En un memorial sagrado, el Departamento de Fire de Los Ángeles y líderes de todo el sur de California recordaron todas las vidas perdidas y honraron a los primeros respondientes que sirvieron ese día.
Estamos en el centro de entrenamiento de memoria del Frank Hodgman y estamos aquí para recordar el 11 de septiembre de 2001. 24 años antes, una tragedia ocurrió que dejó una nación, un país en shock.
Es un evento realmente pesado. El sonido de diez campanas, el sonido de tapas. Hay una pieza real del centro de comercio mundial aquí, 23 toneladas de acero que vino del derrame y está aquí en display como una hermosa y muy sombría y sagrada recordatorio a todas las vidas perdidas y especialmente a muchos primeros respondientes que murieron en la línea de servicio.
Recuerdo ese día claramente. Estábamos dando a los niños listos para la escuela y fue simplemente devastador. Y había mucho miedo y recuerdo eso tan claramente. Ese miedo duró por al menos un año.
Creo que es solo una recordación para nosotros que las personas que ponen esos uniformes y los trabajos que hacen, que cuando estamos escapando de la peligro, son los que están corriendo hacia él. Recordemos que tres de esos aviones estaban dirigidos hacia Los Ángeles. Habían familias que perdieron vidas en los crachas del avión. Todo nos golpeó de una manera muy personal aquí.
Sabes, lo más importante para mí, y me golpeó de nuevo hoy, los miles de personas que continúan siendo enfermas y heridas por algo que sucedió hace 24 años. Las enfermedades continúan, se acumulan en las familias. Esto afecta a generaciones de personas.
Trabajamos lado a lado con la FDMY. Cuando se desplegó, era un equipo de 65, 70 miembros.
Éramos jóvenes entonces y nos pidieron que lo hiciéramos, así que nos sentimos honrados de ser parte de eso.
Solo estuvimos arrojando, haciendo todo lo que pudimos para luchar y buscar y ayudar. El hombre y la pelota, no sabíamos quién era durante 23 años. Lo enviamos a su departamento de fire, dijo que alguien probablemente sabe quién es. Nos dejaron, ¿sabes?, como una caja de abajo para nosotros. Finalmente hablamos con él anoche, Darren Jacobs, y dijo que fue lo más especial que recibió porque sus hijos que tiene ahora, esa es la única prueba que tiene para demostrar que estaba realmente allí.
Al final del día, para todos nosotros vamos a mirar atrás y ver qué era nuestro legado. Lo que no puedes poner un precio es el sentimiento que consigues cuando puedes ayudar a alguien.
Gracias mucho a todos los primeros respondientes por poner sus vidas en el line para no solo proteger a sus familias, amigos y la ciudad y la comunidad, sino también estar como un reflejo de esperanza y confianza para todos nosotros saber que hay individuos que no nos dejarán caer por las cracked.
Creo que es importante para la ciudad y para el país continuar en el levantamiento y recordar lo que pasó el 11 de septiembre. Había personas que nacieron o eran pequeños niños cuando esto sucedió y no saben los impactos que esto ha tenido en nuestro país, cómo ha cambiado las leyes, cómo ha cambiado los presupuestos. Y tenemos que recordar no solo eso, sino a los héroes, las personas que salvaron vidas. Así que para mí es importante que continuemos aportando a esta historia y a este impacto en nuestro país para que nadie olvide.
Unirte al Departamento de Culturas y amigos de la Torre de Watts para un fin de música, comida, cultura y comunidad. El sábado 27 de septiembre es el día del festival de la canción dedicado al ritmo de las culturas mundiales. El festival presentará beatles, coreanos, filipinos, mediterráneos, africanos y beats afrovenezuelas y percusión. El domingo 28 de septiembre es el Simon Rodea de la Torre de Watts Jazz Festival, ahora en su 48º año. El festival muestra soul, gospel y hip hop con artistas tradicionales y contemporáneos de clase mundial. Visita el Centro de Arte de la Torre de Watts para el día del festival de la canción el sábado 27 de septiembre de 10:00 a.m. hasta 18:00 p.m. Y el Simon Rodea de la Torre de Watts Jazz Festival el domingo 28 de septiembre de 10:00 a.m. hasta 18:00 p.m. Para más detalles, visite watztowers.org. Es el anual día de servicio de Tom LaBange. El ex miembro del consejo fue dedicado a la servicio civil y fue conocido ampliamente como el Sr. LA. Todo el mundo está invitado a honrar el legado de LaBange con voluntariado en el sábado 27 de septiembre. Unirte a la Civil Rights, el oficina del jefe del alcalde y el miembro del consejo Adrian Nazarian para este evento de este año, sirviendo el valle como parte de "LA por toda la semana en la ciudad". Inscríbete en voluntariado en línea y reúna en el norte de Hollywood Park para el día de servicio de Tom LaBange que se lleva a cabo el sábado 27 de septiembre a 19:00 p.m. Para más información, visite el calendario en civilandhumanrights.lacity.gov. Incluye el baño de la Vanness para una celebración acuática para marcar el Día de Herencia Hispanicana. El sábado 27 de septiembre, unirte al Departamento de Recreación y Parques de la ciudad de LA y al presidente del consejo Marquise Harris Dawson para este party del baño de la ciudad. Disfruta de un buen tiempo en el baño de la Vanness y celebra con gratis clases de baile, comida, música y más, destacando la cultura, la comunidad y la familia. El Día de Herencia Hispanicana acuático se lleva a cabo el sábado 27 de septiembre, comenzando a 1:00 p.m. Para más información, visite el tablo de eventos en laparks.org. Y eso es un mirar a algunas cosas que hacer.
Y eso es todo por esta semana. Soy Natalia Bilbao y de todos nosotros aquí en LA esta semana, muchas gracias por acompañarnos. Recuerda que puedes vernos en línea en lalecityu.org y también estamos en Instagram, Facebook, X y YouTube. Nos vemos la próxima vez para más LA esta semana.
Morning, everybody, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, the 19th day of September in the year 2025. Public comment for today's meeting and special meeting will be taken in person in this chamber. Madam Clerk, please begin our proceedings by calling the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingville, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Giraro, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yowzlosky, 10 members present and inform Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 17, 2025.
Councilmember Hutt moves. Councilmember Park seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Lee moves. Councilmember Padilla seconds. Madam Clerk, can we run through our agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, would council like all items go forth with today considering the upcoming council recess?
Without objection.
Items one through 12 are items which public hearings have been held. For item four, the Public Safety Committee report has been submitted, circulated, and is available online under Council File 22-1316. For item 11, a Corrected Economic Development and Jobs Committee report has been submitted and circulated and is available online under Council File 15-1207-S1. The Budget and Finance Committee report has also been submitted for item 11. Note, for item 11, there is no action taken on this item in as much as this item will be considered by council during the special meeting as item number 15. For item 12, the Budget and Finance Committee report has been submitted and circulated and is available online under Council File 15-1207-S3. Items 13 and 14 are items which public hearings have not been held. Note, for item 14, 10 votes are required to waive review of the Board of Public Works anticipated action pursuant to Charter Section 245b. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
All right, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, any specials at this time? All right, Councilmember Park, is this you on the queue? Yes, okay.
Yes, Council President, on item eight, we have a friendly amendment.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. McCosker? And it looks like it's being distributed. All right, any other specials members? All right, Madam Clerk, what's next? Mr. McCosker, sorry, Mr. McCosker.
I have an abundance of caution on item number 12. We do have an amendment that was submitted and circulated. I just want to be clear that amendment makes it.
Madam Clerk?
Item 12 should be held on the desk, but there, the amendment, sir...
Okay, it's coming then.
It's coming, okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. McCosker, is there a second to your amendment for 12?
Well, it's being circulated. There's several co-presenters.
So there's seconds on the document, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, great, the screen is fixed now. All right, Madam Clerk, what's next? Seeing no other specials?
What is before council is items one through seven, as well as nine and 10.
All right, let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be... The city attorney has a few words to speak, sir.
Yes, thank you. So, members, the rules are the same as they are in every other meeting, but I understand that if there are additional amendments, particularly to items number 15 or items number 12, that you please get them in before public comment. I believe there are multiple presentations, but we would like to have them all in and processed before we begin public comment during the special meeting. Thank you.
Mr. President, council can now move on to presentation, sir.
All right, we have a big day of presentations today that we'll go into, but before we do that, I just want to remind members, I know we've been all steeped in big issues and in a bit of a rush before the recess coming up, but I wanted to remind us that we are still committed to raising issues around the immigration enforcement that's happening in our city and in our various districts and to our various constituencies. And so while we don't have a specific presentation today, I don't want anybody to think that we've dropped that and we've moved on or we forgot about it. We have not, but for the last couple of days, we've been a bit swamped. So with that, I'll call on Councilmember Price of the New Ninth District. I don't know how long it gets to be new, but the New Ninth District for a special presentation.
Thank you, colleagues. From its humble beginnings in 1925 to becoming a leading institution in technical career education, Los Angeles Trade Tech College has shaped generations of talent across Los Angeles and beyond. Today, we gather to celebrate not just a milestone, but a legacy. 100 years of service, 100 years of excellence, resilience, and transformation at L.A. Trade Tech College. Let's give them a hand. Established in the heart of Los Angeles, L.A. Trade Tech College has stood as a pillar of opportunity and advancement for working-class communities for a full century. The college opens its doors for historically underserved communities, providing affordable, high-quality education, and a pathway to economic mobility. For many, L.A. Trade Tech is not only a school, but a launchpad, especially for first-generation college students, immigrants, and working adults. For 100 years, L.A. Trade Tech has forged powerful partnerships with industry leaders, labor unions, local businesses, to ensure its graduates are job-ready on day one. L.A. Trade Tech has become a national model for how education and workforce development can work hand in hand. And that just happened by itself. We have a powerful leadership team. President Alfred McQuarters has been leading students at the college since '23, providing innovative workforce structures and leadership that has really made a difference. He and his team have made a difference in the community. At this time, let me just bring forward Dr. McQuarters to say a few words. Doctor?
Good morning, Honorable Councilmembers, Councilman Price, members of the general public. I'm Dr. Alfred McQuarters, proud president of L.A. Trade Technical College. With me is Los Angeles College District Board President, Dr. Kelsey Eno. My bright president team, faculty senate president, and our student body president, as well as representatives from the district. On behalf of the LACC Board of Trustees, our Chancellor, Dr. Alberto Ramon, and the Los Angeles Technical College, I would like to thank you for this recognition and for honoring us as our centennial anniversary. It's a really, it's a privilege to stand here today and reflect what 100 years of education, service, and community partnership truly means. If you look here, Trade Tech again started in 1925, but actually, the thought of Trade Tech started even long before then. In 1924, Trade Tech classes were offered throughout the city of L.A. And it wasn't until 1925 those programs were brought together in the Frank Riggins Trade School. And from there, we have been growing. We later became part of the LACC College District as well. And today, we're seeing lots of transformation happen across our college. We have a number of programs. We have nine pathways that are existing within the college. Everything from our co-ordinated program to transfers to the CSUs, the UCs, to automotive programs. We have lots of opportunities for students who want to go into different pathways. When we look at our population of students, we serve over 20,000 students at Trade Tech. The demographics, at least 95% of those students are students of color. 75% are Hispanic Latinx students. What we do here is a number of things. We are providing the workforce, we're providing opportunities for transfer, and we're providing jobs immediately after graduation and completion of certificates. When you look at our study in terms of what benefit do we have other than the individual benefit, there's a number of benefits. We are able to provide social mobility for students. We're able to be an industry feeder to allow businesses to grow. So there's a number of impacts that Trade Tech has been doing for 100 years. We also are in the community. So these are just a couple of examples of some of the community engagements that we are constantly doing around this area. One of the milestones, two milestones I want to share at Trade Tech, as I mentioned before, we have lots of transformation that's occurring. So we have a new construction building that's going up that is going to be completed in 2027, and a new design media arts building that's also going to be completed in 2027. And this year, as you mentioned, is very significant because we have this milestone of 100 years. So from the beginning of this year, we've been having alumni events. I probably can ask the question, how many alumni are in this room? And there's a number of people probably can raise their hand. We have been able to have a number of other things. Our commencement, where we had the state chancellor there. Former U.S. Senator LaFonsa Butler was there as well. And now we're going into our season where we're going to have a celebration together in a gala. So I want to just thank you for this opportunity to speak, to share a little bit about Trade Tech, and just let you know that we are here and proud to be part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. As we look to the next century, L.A. Trade Tech is not slowing down. It's expanding its reach, embracing innovation, and doubling down on its mission of equity, access, and excellence. The next 100 years will be built on the same values that helped shape the last 100 years: opportunity, resilience, and community. So here's to 100 years of empowering students, strengthening communities, and building futures. And here's to the next century of impact, innovation, and inclusion at L.A. Trade Tech College. Happy centennial, L.A. Trade Tech. Your legacy is Los Angeles.
Trade Tech in the house. Councilmember, I just want to thank you. Councilmember Price, I want to thank you for bringing Trade Tech and recognizing this 100th anniversary of Trade Tech. Trade Tech has been an essential part of Los Angeles' way of life and the building of the workers that make Southern California and Los Angeles the economic miracle that it is. And so almost every part of the city and every region, somebody learned how to do something at Trade Tech that they're still using to this day to help build their families, build neighborhoods, and most of all, build our cities. So thank you so much to Los Angeles Trade Technical College. All right, next, we will hear from Councilmember Nazarian of the Second District.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Today, we are here to celebrate an extraordinary milestone for a homegrown nonprofit in Council District Two, Food Forward. And I want to say thank you all for coming to celebrate Food Forward. Great to see all of you here. Since its founding in 2009 in North Hollywood, Food Forward has been on a mission to fight hunger and reduce food waste, and they have just surpassed an incredible achievement, recovering and donating over 500 million pounds of fresh produce, the equivalent of 2 billion servings of fruit and vegetables. This milestone reminds us of the challenges we face. In California, one in five household, one in five... In California, one in five household, one in five household in California, by the way, the fourth-largest economy in the world, struggles with food insecurity. And at the same time, more than a third of food in the U.S. goes unsold or uneaten, representing billions of dollars in loss and untold harm to our environment. Food Forward has created a model solution. With the help of a dedicated team of thousands of volunteers, they rescue perfectly good fruits and vegetables that would otherwise go to waste, from farms, wholesalers, even local backyards. And that's how I got to know them, by the way. There's a lot of orange trees and fruit trees in the San Fernando Valley because the San Fernando Valley was a big orchard. And so they didn't want the fruits to rot, and so they would literally go and pick it up from people's homes, residents' homes. Their work has benefits has benefited our planet. In 2024 alone, Food Forward prevented more than 83,000 tons of greenhouse gas emissions, the same as taking nearly 20,000 cars off the road for a year. And thank you for the clap. You can clap for that. Food Forward's twin mission, fighting food inequity at scale and tackling the climate crisis through food waste prevention, is not just timely, but it's essential. So today, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'm extremely proud to recognize and honor Food Forward for their extraordinary service, their vision, and this historic 500-million-pound milestone. Their work nourishes our communities, protects our environment, and inspires us all. Congratulations, Food Forward. Thank you for the work that you've been doing. Have a small, little presentation to offer you. Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce the CEO of Food Forward, Nick Rick Namus, and Board Chair Jeff Harris to say a few words. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. A little memento of our 500-millionth pound will be reaching all council members. So thank you again. Good morning. I'm Rick Namas, founder and CEO of Food Forward, and beside me is Jeff Harris, the Chair of our Board of Directors. Thank you for this tremendous honor, Councilman Nazarian. On behalf of Food Forward staff, volunteers, board, and our more than 260 hunger-relief partners, we are deeply grateful for this recognition. Over 16 years ago, Food Forward began with the harvesting of two backyard fruit trees in the San Fernando Valley, which produced 800 pounds of fresh, free citrus. Today, we recover and donate enough produce to feed a quarter of a million people every Though we have the data, you got a packed agenda, so I will spare you the details, but please know that this year alone, Food Forward has shared nearly 23 million pounds of fresh, free produce with food insecure residents of all stripes across the city of Los Angeles, reaching every single council district. And nine months after wildfires tore through lives and livelihoods, we continue to support families and those who worked and still work in fire-ravaged areas, making sure that healthy access to food is one less thing they have to worry about.
Food Forward addresses food insecurity like no other nonprofit in the region, and we help the City of Los Angeles advance towards its goal of zero waste by 2050. In the chambers right behind me, we have some, just some of our 55 team members that helped make the magic happen. We could not have imagined achieving this milestone when we began our work 16 years ago. Since starting our work, we have rescued and distributed to communities in Los Angeles, neighboring counties, and neighboring states over 500 million pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables. More produce flows through the city of Los Angeles than any other city in North America. This honor today also recognizes thousands of truck drivers, pantry coordinators, volunteers, and produce donors who help support Food Forward.
But our work is far from done. As federal nutrition programs face shameful cuts and more families struggle with the cost of living, the need for Food Forward has never been greater. We are committed, we are doubling down, and we are going into deeper into areas of need. On behalf of everyone at Food Forward, thank you for standing with us. We welcome opportunities to work hand-in-hand with the city, and we continue to ensure a Los Angeles where abundance is shared, waste is eliminated, and every community has access to the nourishment it deserves. Thank you all very much, Council President. Thank you, and to my colleagues, thank you as well for recognizing Food Forward for the work that they do.
And thank you so much, Mr. Nazarian, and thank you, Food Forward, and good to see you. Rick, I know you've been in this movement for a good minute, and it's a righteous cause and something that helps make the fabric of Los Angeles that much better. So thank you all so much for your work. Another big round of applause. Now we will yield the floor to Councilmember Rahman of the fourth district.
Come on, let's all get together.
We want to get all the beautiful turquoise.
It's teal.
Into the.
Teal, sir, teal.
Into the shot.
Yes. Let's call it by its name.
Teal, thank you so much.
Thank you, teal.
Get all the teal into the shot.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Good morning, colleagues. Every year, for nine years running, we have taken time in these chambers to pause and recognize Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. It was an effort that was led by Councilmember Paul Coretts. Right? Councilmember Paul Coretts for many years, and I was delighted to take it over because this was one of those presentations in city council where I learned. Ovarian cancer is a disease that too often goes undetected. It has been called the silent killer because its symptoms are subtle, and for too many women, they go unnoticed until it's too late. I was, as I mentioned, largely in the dark about ovarian cancer and the need for screenings. I didn't know that there are no standard screenings, that there's no one-size-fits-all test, or that this disease remains the fifth-leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States. One in 78 women will face this deadly diagnosis, and without reliable screenings, it's incumbent upon us as women to be proactive in listening to our bodies and recognizing the symptoms. But if you don't even know, how will you do that? Women's health issues are often like this, that we have things like menopause that are hardly talked about, urinary tract infections, and like ovarian cancer, things that are far more deadly. But the ovarian cancer circle, who I am so proud to honor again in these chambers today, reminds us that we cannot and we must not put ourselves last. Born from the story of Robin Babini and the extraordinary courage of her mother, Paulinda, the ovarian cancer circles has become one of the leading organizations in the country advocating for a cure and keeping up that drumbeat so that this issue is not forgotten, that it is not laid by the wayside, as so many women's issues often are. Paulinda took her own tragedy and said, "We will make something larger than myself and my family, and we will make sure that it serves all women." That circle, the ovarian cancer circle, has built a powerful community here in Los Angeles, and you can see them dressed in teal behind me. It is committed to educating women everywhere about the symptoms of ovarian cancer, about raising the critical funds needed for research that will one day, and hopefully that day is soon, lead to a cure. And I hope that today, like this chamber has done in past years, today will serve as both a tribute and a call to action for this issue. And with that, I would like to introduce the inimitable Paulinda.
President Harris-Dawson, Councilmember Rahman, and esteemed city council members. My name is Paulinda Babini, and I am the president and founder of the ovarian cancer circle, inspired by Robin Babini. There's a picture up there. When Robin was 16 years old, she began experiencing a range of alarming symptoms. Like many families, we knew nothing about ovarian cancer, and we do not carry the BRCA gene, which increases your risk for both ovarian and breast cancer. Tragically, her gynecologist did not even consider ovarian cancer due to her young age. By the time Robin was finally diagnosed, it was stage three ovarian cancer. She fought courageously, enduring over two and a half years of surgery and chemotherapy, but in the end, she lost her life just at the age of 20. She was just beginning her freshman year at UC Santa Barbara. In the face of this unimaginable loss, I knew I had to do something to found, and I founded the ovarian cancer circle, inspired by Robin Babini, a nonprofit dedicated to raising awareness about this silent, deadly disease. Our mission is simply but urgent, to educate women and their loved ones about the signs and symptoms and risk factors of ovarian cancer, because knowledge can truly save lives. I give out these bookmarks, and we gave them to all the council members, and they talk about the symptoms on the back. I think it's on the screen, or it's supposed to be, the symptoms, somewhere. Okay, well, anyway, it's a bookmark. As you can see from the bookmark we shared on the screen, we tirelessly work to share this life-saving information. And we know it does save lives. We are proud and today to be joined by three of our incredible women, Flower Miller, Karen Gilman, and Pat Grotlisch, who are all survivors and thrivers. They are the face of a hope that women can survive ovarian cancer. Shortly, Pat will be sharing her personal story. On behalf of the ovarian cancer circle, Dr. Sinazma Marzadeh, I want to extend a heartfelt gratitude to Councilmember Rahman for ongoing support for this proclamation recognizing the circle, for advocacy, and to Dr. Marzadeh for her groundbreaking research. A special shout-out to Sarah Tamberg, Councilman Rahman's senior advisor for her dedication. This marks the eighth consecutive year or the ninth that the city council has recognized September as ovarian cancer awareness month, illuminating City Hall teal, the national color of ovarian cancer. We also like to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Paul Coretts, who originally launched the council's effort. And we have here Ali Samard, the Director of Communications from Paul's termanship. Since our founding 15 years ago, we've raised over $1 million to support Dr. Marzadeh's cutting-edge research. And do I introduce Dr. Marzadeh? And it gives me great pleasure, Dr. Marzadeh is a physician, surgeon, tenured professor, and leading scientist. This year alone, she secured over $4 million in grant funding to advance ovarian cancer research, specifically targeting a recurrent disease which tragically occurs 80% of the cases. It now gives me a great honor to introduce Dr. Sinazma Marzadeh.
Thank you all for your attention. We're here to shed light on gynecologic cancers and all the women who have been affected by these diagnoses. We heard the statistics, and I'm going to talk about both endometrial and ovarian cancers, and they account for the fifth and sixth-leading causes of cancer-related death in women. Though despite their prevalence, they continue to be understudied and also underfunded. Councilmember Rahman talked about this. I think part of the reason is that they hit below the belt, there is a reluctance to talk about these cancers, and also these cancers solely affect women. We heard a little bit about the challenges. Patients with advanced ovarian cancer often come to us and, you know, not knowing what the signs and symptoms are, hence patients are diagnosed at late-stage disease. Many times, even the physicians are not cued to those symptoms. I've also taken care of patients with advanced endometrial cancer who face a similar kind of challenge. And in many cases, we operate on patients, provide chemotherapy, and in many of those cases, the cancers can recur. So this is a challenge, this is a problem we're trying to solve in our lab. We're very committed to do this. I'm very fortunate to have brilliant scientists, collaborators, working with us at UCLA. And I'm just going to very briefly summarize three key approaches that we're taking. One, to understand the nature of the cells that cause recurrence of disease, and how can we better target them. Two, to devise innovative and new immune therapy strategies that can hopefully eradicate the cancer. And three, design and test cancer vaccines that hopefully can reinvigorate the patient's own immune system, preventing relapse. But to do this kind of research, we actually need funding. And the funding for gynecologic cancers is really dismal. I'll give you some statistics. Prostate cancer, as a disease, gets 16 times more federal funding for year-of-life loss compared to endometrial and ovarian cancers. So while we always apply for federal funding sources and competitive grants, we also rely on philanthropic support. That is why this partnership with Paulinda and her group has been incredible, not only in raising awareness, but also raising philanthropic dollars needed to do this kind of life-saving research. So thank you all for your attention to this important cause.
And now we'll welcome Pat to speak. I didn't know I was doing the introduction. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for all of you for taking time from your busy schedule to meet with us for ovarian cancer awareness month. My name is Pat Grotlisch, and I am a survivor. I live in Marina. I live in Marina Del Rey with my feral cat. My daughter works for the Keck Medical Center at the USC campus as a substance abuse specialist. My career, for most of my career, I worked in the office furniture industry for Steel Case and for Herman Miller. In 2012, I made a career change. I joined the construction industry as a construction design manager for National Gypsum Company. I retired on December 31 of 2024. Since retiring, I have been doing volunteer work for UCLA Medical Center in Santa Monica, for the La Brea Tar Pits, and for the ovarian cancer circle that was founded by Dr. or excuse me, by Paulinda Babini, in order to raise funds for Dr. Marzadeh for her cancer research, her ovarian cancer research. My cancer journey started December 24 of 2023. I went to the UCLA Urgent Care Center because I thought I had a urinary tract infection. After the doctor looked at my test results, he said, "You do not have an UTI." And he sent my results over to my primary care doctor at UCLA. At this point, cancer was the furthest thing from my mind. Nobody in my family that I knew had cancer. I never smoked, I exercised regularly, I drank very little alcohol, and I'm a pescatarian. My doctor, my primary care doctor, referred me to a urologist. After the examination, she said, "I am going to make an appointment for you with a wonderful doctor." And when I was in that exam room, she picked up her cellphone and she called Dr. Marzadeh's office, and she set up that appointment for me. I was beginning to understand that my medical condition was much more serious than I had originally anticipated. Dr. Marzadeh scheduled me for an MRI, for a CT scan, and for an ultrasound. I had cancer in my left ovary, I needed surgery, and I made the decision to have a total hysterectomy. The surgery went very well. The surgery went very well. The good news was that the cancer was confined to my left ovary. The bad news was that when they did the abdominal washing, they found abnormal cells. I had six chemotherapy infusions every three weeks. My last infusion was 13 months ago. I am incredibly grateful to the wonderful care that I received from UCLA Medical Center, especially Dr. Marzade. I do have some side effects, but I am just grateful. I am optimistic about the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to Pat for sharing your story. Thank you, Dr. Marzade, for your dedication to an under-recognized disease that impacts women across the world. And thank you, Paulinda, for bringing our attention to this year after year. Because it wasn't up when you were talking, I do just want to read out the symptoms, because they are- Yeah, they're symptomatic of so many other diseases. You may never know that what you have is ovarian cancer. And they're often vague and misdiagnosed. Abdominal pressure, bloating, discomfort or bleeding, nausea and digestion or gas, feeling full but eating less than normal, unusual or lasting fatigue, shortness of breath, unexplained weight gain or loss, urinary frequency, that's why you were testing for the UTI, or constipation or diarrhea. These are symptoms of so many other illnesses. And if we don't know to look for ovarian cancer, we may never discover it. And the earlier you detect it, the higher our chances are of surviving it. So I wanted to just read all of that out before I presented to Paulinda and the members of the Ovarian Cancer Circle our recognition from the City of Los Angeles and to thank all of you for your time and attention and awareness of this issue. I know it has impacted people around this horseshoe personally in the past. And I hope that it doesn't impact any of us. But if it does, that we are aware enough to get the care that we need and that we are able to support Dr. Marzade's work. So thank you, Paulinda. Thank you to the Ovarian Cancer Circle. And I wanted to make sure that we recognize your work and the work of Dr. - This is for the Ovarian Cancer Circle, a recognition from the City of Los Angeles, as well as a recognition for-
As you're presenting those beautiful certs, I just wanted to thank you, Councilmember Rahman, for taking the baton on this presentation. And say to all of you that are doing this work and have branded your work with the color teal, which we will light up City Hall during this weekend. And your work is so, so important, you know. I think this happens to women everywhere. It happened to my mother. You go to the doctor, and they say, "You have some of the symptoms that Councilmember just said." And the doctor will tell you, "Oh, you're just stressed." Or, "Oh, you need to exercise more." Or, "Oh, you need to drink more water." So raising consciousness among women and among medical professionals is as important as the science that takes us towards a cure to cancer. And so, again, thank you all for continuing to raise the flag and to raise awareness around this issue that so many of us face. Thank you.
And thank you, Council President, for giving us this space again in this chamber to mark this month. Thank you all.
All right, now we'll have a special welcome and presentation from Councilmember Park of the 11th District.
Thank you so much, Council President. I am really excited to announce that we have the board and executive members of the Venice Chamber of Commerce with us today. As you all probably know, the Venice Chamber of Commerce is really, truly an invaluable asset in our business community, representing businesses and property owners since 1973, although its history dates actually all the way back to 1907, the era when Abbott Kinney was founding Venice of America, and actually predated the annexation to the City of Los Angeles in 1925. In 2007, the Venice Chamber celebrated its centennial anniversary. And today, they are an active force in the local community, promoting local businesses, providing events and meeting opportunities for members, advocating for the commercial and tourist needs of LA's most vibrant beachside community, and working in service on behalf of all things Venice. Thank you all so much for what you do. Venice is really proud of its heritage, its diverse population, and its strong sense of community, as well as the variety of businesses and professional opportunities it offers. We have an eclectic mix of retail restaurants, art galleries, personal services, and events. And that's all what makes it one of the most popular tourist destinations in all of the United States. So we are really excited because today is the first annual Venice Chamber of Commerce Day at City Hall. And we are super excited to bring these members here today for a day of engagement around city governance, economic development, and Olympics prep. You really couldn't have picked a better day to be with us in our council chambers. So welcome. Let's give them a round of applause for being here today.
Thank you so much, and welcome, welcome, welcome. And thank you for all the work you do for Venice and for the entirety of Southern California and the City of Los Angeles. Welcome, welcome, welcome. All right, Madam Quick, what's next?
Mr. President, council may now go into public comment, sir.
All right. We will now open for public comment. I'll ask the city attorney to read instructions into the record. And Mr. City Attorney, could you read the instructions in light of the fact that we have a special meeting? And I think there might be some confusion based on when we do public comment on what. We'll have two separate public comment sections, and they won't sort of overlap with each other. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, so I will cover the bulk of the instructions now. So I'd ask that, I know that some of you have been here multiple times. Please pay particularly close attention to the instructions today because we do have a separate special meeting. And as the Council President has said, there will be an additional period for public comment. So with that, I will begin. To people providing public comment during the regular meeting, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to two minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. And the reason why there's only two minutes for the agenda items is because public comment has been satisfied for all of the other items except for the two for which public comment has not been heard. This does not count against any time during the special meeting. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the Council President. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment during this regular meeting are items 13 and 14. So again, the items open for public comment on the agenda are items 13 and 14. If you are here to speak on item number 15, you'll need to wait until after council goes into the special meeting, which was noticed for any time after 11:30 a.m. So again, there will be a separate public comment period during the special meeting. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. But a couple more announcements, if I could have the interpreters make the first one aloud to the room, please. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret. We will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you. A few final instructions before we begin. As you can see, we're at a full house today. So in order to help us accommodate as many people as possible, I would ask a few things. First, please wait until you hear the name that you signed up under called aloud through the speakers before lining up. The order in which those names are called is randomly generated. So it's not necessarily the order in which you signed up. But once you hear that name called aloud, you can line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Additionally, if you are here only for general public comment, please let us know before you begin, or as soon as you get to the podium, that you're here for general public comment, and we will start your time for that one minute. Thank you.
I will begin by calling the following names: Jessie G., Candido, Tom Davis, Robert E., and Aaron Taxi.
And I think I see at least two people coming up. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak on item number 15.
Okay, so again, so item number 15 is not available now because this is the regular meeting. You have one minute for general. Anyone, again, if you would like to speak to item number 15, there will be a separate public comment period at the 11:30 meeting.
And that's fine. I was a little surprised myself.
Go ahead. Okay, so next speaker?
Before the next speaker begins, I will call the following names: Ken M., Amber Barrett, Vaughn Wheeler, Steve Cho, and Amber Barrett.
Good morning. Which items?
Item 14 in general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for item 14 and one minute for general. Go ahead.
All right, fantastic. Good morning, council members. My name is Aaron Taxi, and I'm here representing the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and our 650 businesses who employ some 120,000 people across Los Angeles. And I'm here to speak in strong support of a full convention center modernization and expansion project. We do not want any half-measures. We want the full project to go through. This is not just an investment in a building. This is not just an investment in downtown. It's an investment in our entire city. It's an investment in our tourism economy, in our hospitality industry. The people who come to these conventions will not just stay in downtown. They will head to Venice Beach. They will head to check out the restaurants in Mid-City. And yes, they will come to the Hollywood Walk of Fame to experience the magic. They will patronize our restaurants. They will fill our hotels. And they will uplift our entire economy. This is a critical project to put us in a competitive place in general for conventions and for tourism.
General public comment?
Thank you. But also for our upcoming global events, such as the 2028 Olympics. I strongly urge you to support the full expansion and modernization project. Thank you.
I will call up more names: Manny P., Dan M., Hira Kapoor, Morris Rocha, and Navajo Joe. I will read a few more names to come up to the podium to speak: Sid Bernard, Hillary Norton, Nolan Marshall, Stuart Waldman, and Carlos Cota.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General comment and number 14.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Hira Kapoor, and I represent the - Well, I'm here as a resident of downtown Los Angeles and Los Angeles. And I'm speaking in support of the full redo of the Los Angeles Convention Center. I think it's imperative that we do the whole scope of the convention center. The convention center is pivotal, and it's actually a moneymaker for the City of Los Angeles. We have to remember FIFA World Cup is coming, and so is the 2028 Olympics. So it is pivotal that we look at the entire scope. I also am on the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, and we have done three CISs in support of the full scope of the convention center. So I really recommend that you take this seriously and look at the people behind me because they are here for jobs. And they need their jobs, and they want their jobs. And the LA Convention Center offers them those jobs.
General public comment?
Everybody behind me-
Yes.
Everybody behind me took the time today to come and speak to you about the convention center. The convention center is pivotal for Los Angeles. You guys cannot miss this opportunity to change the scope of Los Angeles and actually put us back on the world stage. And if you don't do this, you will miss an amazing opportunity. So thank you very much. Have a good day.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call up a few more names to come up to the podium: Neela McCosker, Sergeant Gunny, Kurt Peterson, Greg Reeves, Alec Mesropian, and Adam Burke.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Item 14 in general.
Okay. You have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Nolan Marshall. I am the president and CEO of the Social District. The Social District is the home of the Convention Center, LA Live, and the South Park neighborhood. We've been here many times supporting this project. And I have never seen for a project that we've supported as diverse a group of constituents as is behind me today. This project is critical economic development infrastructure, which I think is a distinction that's worth making. You all have been weighing the impact on the general fund for this project. But with other economic development infrastructure projects, those aren't the metrics that you use at all. At least, those aren't the metrics that are used anywhere else in the country. This project will produce $6 billion in labor wages. That's a two-to-one investment ratio. This project will produce $15 billion in economic output. That's a five-to-one ratio.
General?
This project will produce three-to-one in GDP. Those are what we normally weigh economic infrastructure projects on, not return to general fund. It's imperative that we improve this project. I would even say it's malpractice, given those numbers and given the state of the city, if we just look away from that kind of economic impact. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that there's certainly a chance of failure if we don't move, if we move this project forward. We could not get this project done. But turning around at the finish line is an admission of a failure. It's an acceptance that we've already failed before we've even tried. Councilmember McCosker this morning said that there is no constituency for the future. But I beg to differ just a little bit. I'm raising a nine-year-old and a six-year-old three blocks from the convention center. And they've seen me do this work in New Orleans, and Dallas, and in Vancouver. And my nine-year-old wanted to be here today so he could tell you all that you would be crazy not to do this. You have to do this project now. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Hillary Norton from Fastlink DTLA, and I'm also here to testify on behalf of Move LA and as a CCA director. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Convention Center Expansion and Modernization and urge you to support it. Improving the Convention Center, which will bring at least 5 million new visitors each year, not only has positive local funding benefits, but increasing transit ridership to and from the Convention Center will increase federal funding by billions of dollars. We have to build this Convention Center. I was so disappointed to hear the testimony in committee on Tuesday. I was a council staffer in the 1990s when we recovered from a civil disturbance. We recovered from an earthquake and near bankruptcy. But we also built the beginning of a multibillion-dollar transit network that serves over 300 million people. And AEG built the Staples Center in 18 months, and it helped LA's economic boom for decades. I urge you to vote in favor of the Convention Center. Turn L.A. around from the pattern of no and slow to yes and best.
And before the next speaker begins, and I thank you, everyone, for holding your applause till after the speakers are done. Just if you could exit to your right-hand side, we're gonna just sort of loop everybody in and out. Your other right, Stuart. Sorry. Yes. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Fourteen and public comment.
Okay, so you have one for each. Go ahead.
Thank you. Stuart Waldman, President of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. We are here strongly in support of expanding the Convention Center. This is something that should have been done a long time ago. It should have been done two years ago. We're here now. We can get this done. It benefits every inch of this city. It benefits the Valley. As we have more conventions, bigger conventions, we're able to compete with Orlando and San Diego and Las Vegas and bring more people here. They are going to be coming to every part of the city. They are gonna be coming to the Valley. They are gonna be spending money. This is going to be a job creator that is going to benefit everyone. We need to do this. We need to pass this. Hillary said no to low and slow and yes to fast. I don't pay attention sometimes. But whatever she said, I agree. Let's make it happen, and let's make it happen now. Thank you.
Here, item fourteen in public comment.
Okay, so you have one for each. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Carlos Cota. I'm International Vice President for the IETSC and the Department Director for Convention and Trade Show. And you're gonna hear a lot on the merits of the Convention Center, but I wanted to offer a kind of unique perspective. Part of my responsibilities and my job function are to travel all over the United States and Canada to work with other cities on developing career pathways, training and education. And then also, interaction with industry groups, which, you know, talking about conventions and expansions. What I do want to share with you, and only one minute listed here. Do I get two? Public comment, and I'll just keep going. So what I want to share with you is every one of our closest competitors that I'm working with while I'm out there is concerned about this project. They know that they, when L.A. ups their game, they're gonna have to be more competitive. And they're gonna be in a less competitive position once this is done. So I'm encouraging you to really look at Los Angeles. Everything this city has to offer...
General?
From our international airport to all the areas that... Tourist attractions that people want to come visit, just the capacity of this city and everything the city has to offer. If we can move this project forward and do it now before we're on the world stage, it's gonna be a game changer in the industry. And I just want to let you all know that the entire industry is looking at it. I applaud your efforts to this point and encourage passing this expansion and this investment in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item fourteen in public comment. My name is Yvonne Wheeler, and I'm the President of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, representing over eight hundred thousand union members in Los Angeles County, including the workers at the Los Angeles Convention Center. And I'm here today to speak in strong support for the Convention Center expansion. L.A. is a world-class city with deep history of being innovative and leading the world. We're the land of Hollywood, where we teach the world to dream big. We're the city of champions with the Lakers, Dodgers, Rams, Kings, and Sparks. And we're the home of world-class arts, music, and entertainment. And yet, when we look at our Convention Center, we rank number twenty-one and dropping. That is unacceptable for a city of champions, and we need to invest in our Convention Center. And an investment in a Convention Center is an investment in our future. It is also an investment in the workers and poverty alleviation at a time when Los Angeles is in the midst of major job crisis. The Convention Center is home to thousands of permanent...
General?
Full-time union jobs that allow workers to keep a roof over their head and food on their table. In addition, this will create additional thousands of jobs, union jobs, for more Angelenos who need economic... Need an economic lifeline. Workers at the Convention Center's trade shows can earn up to six-figure salaries. And these jobs are open to local residents and union apprenticeship programs. With audiovisual work alone, workers get to hire at a trade show, can utilize their experience to move into a Hollywood set or a live concert at the Hollywood Bowl. This is an investment in careers. The construction jobs to build this expansion have a fifty percent local hire requirement, meaning that Los Angeles will bill... Not only build the work, but they will be employed locally. And these jobs are at a time when the federal policies have us headed into a recession. I could go on. But as you see, an investment in the Convention Center is an investment in workers. It's an investment in poverty alleviation.
Speaker, your time has expired.
In L.A.'s future. Let's get this done.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item fourteen in public comment.
Okay, so you have one for each. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. President. Esteemed members of the City Council. My name is Ernesto Medrano. I'm the Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles and Orange Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm also a proud son of Boyle Heights and a graduate of Roosevelt High School. Go Rough Riders. I'm here representing my fellow one hundred and sixty thousand skilled and trained union construction workers of our fourteen trades who shape Southern California. We stand here in support of the Los Angeles Convention Center expansion project. It's not just an investment in the Convention Center. It's an investment in the careers and long-term success of our local workers and their families. This project will bring over eight thousand local construction, high-skill, high-wage jobs, and over sixteen hundred new apprentices. These are real careers, not gigs. With health care and defined pension benefit, a chance of the middle-class California dream, the Convention Center will kick-start careers for these individuals and drive meaningful change for their families, just as it did for me.
General?
I started my career at the Convention Center loading and loading trucks for the trade shows. I was a member of Team Local 986 as a casual there. So the opportunity for the Convention Center to launch the careers for the next generation means a lot to me here. The modernization of the Convention Center also paves the way for millions of visitors whose spending will bring much-needed tax revenue into the city. The vote is a defining moment for our city. Opportunities have had an impact. The scale are few and far in between. In moments like these, our representatives and visionaries decided it was time to lead and think long-term for the health and the viability of our city. Businesses and labor have come together and supported this project for a reason because they believe that the transformational influence it can have on our city. Today, Angelenos need the City Council to show leadership and make this project a reality. Our members are ready to don their hard hats, their work boots, their tool belt, start moving dirt, and build this Convention Center. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item fourteen in general public comment, please.
So you have one for each. Go ahead.
My name is Neela McCosker. I run Central City Association. And much like my time, the city of Los Angeles is on the clock. In fact, we might be in overtime with final seconds to go. The project before you today stands to transform our future, the lives of your constituents who want to work, who want their businesses to be open, and who want their potholes fixed. Downtown provides the largest tax base to the city. No other neighborhood brings in TOT or business tax to this degree. The fiscally responsible choice is not to do less right now, is not to wait and debate. It's to put shovels in the ground right now. Thank you to the members who have already committed your yes to this vote. Thank you for believing in the power of business, labor, community, your own city staff. To those still deliberating, don't shrink. Impose tighter controls. Be vigilant. Hold the project team accountable. Hold the departments accountable. But give us confidence in our city and in our future. Let's do this. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Public comment and fourteen, please.
Okay, so you have one for each. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Adam Burke with the Los Angeles Tourism Board. And as your contractor, my goal is to always ensure that you have the most accurate information on which to base your decisions. To that end, there are two key issues that I'd like to address. First, the city analysis that's been presented to council dramatically understates the additional revenues the Convention Center expansion will generate. As referenced in my April eighth letter to council, the data we provided is based on over forty years of experience booking the Convention Center. And we've already developed a pipeline of over ninety major conventions who want to host their citywides here in L.A. post-expansion. That data has been provided to Oxford Economics, who prepared a comprehensive analysis that you've received. To clarify, Oxford Economics was founded in nineteen eighty-one through partnership with Oxford University School of Business and are globally recognized as one of the most reputable and respected economic consulting firms in the world. The city's analysis suggests that by more than doubling the amount of our Convention Center, we would only see an additional fifty thousand attendees annually. That figure represents the total attendance of just one to two major conventions, understating the economic upside by ten to twenty times. In fact, within the first five years post-expansion, our community will see over two thousand four hundred new jobs, three-point-seven billion dollars in new local business sales, and one hundred fifty-seven million dollars in new general fund contributions to offset expansion costs. Second, it's critical to understand that this is not just a downtown project. It is vital civic infrastructure that will drive economic benefit to every single council district with forty-nine thousand Angelenos relying on these conventions for their livelihoods. For the long-term health of our regional economy, I implore you, let's not let this generational opportunity pass us by. Thank you for your support.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Fourteen in general.
Okay, so you have one for each. Go ahead.
Good morning, committee, fellow workers, members, board, and staff. My name is Amber. I'm a proud L.A. native. I am also a dedicated single mother to a sophomore honor roll student in the L.A. USD. I will soon be celebrating my second year as an apprentice with the Local 831, working as a trade show installer and decorator at the L.A. Convention Center. Joining this trade has been life-changing, especially financially. It has given me the ability to provide more of a stable and comfortable life for my child. Living less than ten miles from the Convention Center... And the proposed expansion represents more than just growth for the facility. It also means increased opportunities for myself, my fellow union members, and the entire community. More work means greater financial security for our families and economic benefits for surrounding businesses. On behalf of Local 831 and all of our other local unions, I proudly express our full support for the expansion. We believe it will have a lasting positive impact on workers, businesses, and the city as a whole. Let's continue to make L.A. great. Thank you for your consideration.
Good morning. Which items?
Good morning. General and public comment on item fourteen.
Okay, so you have one for each. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good morning, council members. Happy Friday. My name is Steve Cho. I'm the Dual General Manager for the Moxie and AC Hotel in downtown Los Angeles. Today's a unique day. If you look behind us here, you have the room represented with business and labor. And that doesn't happen too often, where we're on the same side of a topic. And today is one of those items that I think is an impact for, not only for business and labor, but for everybody in the city. On top of all the great advocating comments that were already made in advance, I can't urge you enough to vote yes on the Convention Center expansion as it not only will create more jobs and add economic impact to the city, but additionally add additional investments into the city that currently are at a halt. So we look forward to seeing future investments come into the city with investors based on the expansion approval today. So I wanted to thank you all in advance for your yes votes.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, sir. Thank you. I'm here on item fourteen and public comment, the Convention Center.
So you have one for each. Go ahead.
One of the things that I've been lucky to be part of was watching the Convention Center back in the seventies being built. We owned property at thirteen fifty East... Thirteen fifty East Seventeenth. And then we had another piece of property off of Western... Excuse me, Pico and Figueroa, which were taken from us. But watching the workers back then, I see the same energy here with the union here ready to take a Convention Center that's probably a ten, go to a one. And I think we can do that. It's time that we do that. This city deserves a Convention Center that it can be proud of. And I hope that you folks will do that for us. Make us proud of this city. And thank you, guys, for being here. I want to go on to public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Ms. Padilla, you don't listen to me, but I want to thank you for what you did for a Water and Power employee, Mr. Serrano. You folks didn't know him. Richard Serrano worked for Water and Power. He was here all the time. He passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was always challenging, Ms. Padilla. But you, ma'am, you honored him with dignity. And you helped... You helped us, who still suffer from the ugliness of Ms. Nury Martinez and her predecessor. You gave us hope that maybe, maybe, out of the sixth district, we have a chance of having a person like Mr. Inardi Benardi back, who served us for thirty-two years. So thank you for looking at me. Because, you know, maybe tomorrow I may criticize you like I'll go after John Lee for banning Porter Ranch, Old Porter Ranch. But thank you for honoring a DWP union member who was here trying to make the city great. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up for public comment Elisa Diaz and Gordy G.
Good morning. Which items? Can we... So if you could adjust the mic, just pull it up just a little bit so we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, good morning. My name is Sidney Barard. I'm a proud retired member of the sheet metal workers' union, Local 105. And I live in Council District eleven in Ladera. And I'd like to speak directly to Tracy Park, council member. I was at your community meeting Sunday at Pan's Restaurant. And I'm part of a block club, Flores Avenue, with Daphne Bradford, who supports you all the way. I've worked at this trade for many decades. And the only reason I was able to raise my family by a home and retire with security in your district is because of major projects like this one here at the Convention Center. These projects have created steady careers that keep people like me working all year long. Today, I'm here to support, not myself, but my brothers and sisters in the trade who are looking for the same chance I had. I urge you to stand with us, your constituents, to support this project. Thank you very much.
I will call up two more names to the podium. Taylor and Blair Bestin.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Could I touch on fourteen and general public comment?
Yes, so you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Cool. So for 14, I just want to say I'm in favor. I think investing in Los Angeles and investing in the people is a good idea, especially with the big beautiful bill, HR1 and Project 2025 coming through the pipelines. With those bills, with those projects, unions, labor, wages, healthcare, that's all under attack. So let's give our people the chance to save and fight back and be secure while we still can. Which brings me to general public comment. My general public comment is I'm not seeing a whole lot of support from the city. It's amazing watching these other cities really put their people first and really write executive orders that protect the First Amendment right. They have executive orders where the police officers are not working and aiding and abetting with ICE, they're not involved in that investigation at all. I know our small businesses, I know our neighbors are struggling with rent and struggling with wages. They don't feel safe going outside, they don't feel safe going to work. And someone like me, it's hard to work with everything that's going on right now. So maybe raising the unemployment rate would be wise right now. Again, let's give our people a chance to fight back. In addition, it's the brave protesters that got us all of these union rights, that got us the weekend, that got us the right to vote, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Let's not discard them now.
Good morning. General public comment and item number 14.
Okay, so you have one for each. Go ahead.
Thank you. Blair Bestin with the executive director of the Historic Core Business Improvement District. Thank you for hearing me today, council members. You heard a lot of statistics that for in support of the convention center that are compelling on their own, we cannot keep our beautiful city even remotely supported. We cannot keep our streetlights on, we cannot fix our sidewalks, and these are facts. But if we cannot understand the exponential value of capital investment, attracting tourism, more investments, and putting ourselves at the top of the list of cities, if we cannot understand the benefit of exponential revenue growth, then we're more lost than anyone imagined. Los Angeles has evidence that it reacts, but it seldom plans ahead. It's time we stop that modus operandi that has led us to this devastating point and change course. People love to claim that Los Angeles is anti-business.
General.
And we don't make nearly enough decisions to prove that claim wrong. More importantly, the constant closures that we're seeing of businesses, these are immigrant-owned, these are women-owned businesses, these are legacy-owned businesses, and these are the businesses that make our city special. It's time we invest in our beautiful city's future and send the message to other investors that Los Angeles is worth it. Thank you.
Council president, that's all the speakers for the allotted time.
All right, thank you so much for everybody who spoke during this section of public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us at this time?
Mr. President, council can now vote on item 13, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on 13, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next, council may now vote on item 14, as amended by motion Harris, Dawson, McCosker.
All right, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
What's next?
Next, council can vote on item 8, which was amended by motion Park, McCosker.
All right, let's open the roll on this item, as amended by council members Park and McCosker, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, would council like to recess the regular meeting and convene the special, sir?
Yes.
Shall I call the roll, sir?
Yes, please.
Blumenfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Herado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rudri, Yosoto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 13 members present in the court, Mr. President.
All right, what items are before us?
Mr. President, item 15 is an item for which public hearing has been held. Note for item 15, a corrected economic development and jobs committee report, as well as the budget and finance committee report, have been submitted, circulated, and available online under council file 15-1207-S1.
All right, before Mr. Zabel comes forward, we, Mr. City Attorney, I believe we have public comment for this section, if you can prepare us for that?
Yes, and before I do that, I believe that there have been a few amendments that have been circulated already, but if we could have the members who introduced them or have sent them to the CLA just introduce them orally into the record, I believe they have been or will be posted on the bulletin board shortly. So I have 15, I think C and 15D. So I believe 15A is a motion from council member Herado.
No, correction. 15A is the economic development and jobs report, 15B is the budget and finance committee report, and those are on the agenda. However, 15C is motion Herado, Price. As well as there is also 15D, and that is motion Harris, Dawson, McCosker, Hutt, Price, Nazarian, and seconded by council member Herado.
So members of the public, if you would like to take a look at those amendments before public comment or during public comment, they should be available on the bulletin board on your right-hand side of council chambers. And with that, I will give a very brief overview of the public comment period during this special meeting. So because this is a special meeting, there is no general public comment, but you can have one minute for the item that is on there, and that is the only item, that is item 15, which is related to the LA City Convention Center expansion project. So if you would like to speak on that item, we would ask that you please, to the extent you have not done so already, sign up at the kiosks in the back, and I believe read names that, again, will be called at random. So please wait till you hear the name that you signed up under called aloud before lining up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Go ahead.
Okay, I will begin by calling the following names, Tim Hinson, Tony de Trinidad, Ron
And I see a couple people coming up. It just takes a little bit to get to the podium. Go ahead. And once you get to the podium, you can start. You'll have one minute, since there's only one item on the agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, council. My name is Tony de Trinidad with the Painters and Allied Trades, District Council 36, and we're here in strong support of item 15, the expansion of the convention center. We strongly feel this expansion creates so many pathways.
Hold this time really quick, sorry. So your time has paused. Just if you could pull back from the microphone, if you're too close, you'll get some feedback.
Hello, hello, can you hear me now? All right.
Better, thank you.
Okay, so we strongly feel that this expansion creates so many pathways for career-sustaining jobs here in LA for working people. But unfortunately, a number of council members on this council disagree, and it is disheartening because this city has so much potential to improve its infrastructure and modernization. Right now, we have an abandoned high-rise building with graffiti all over it, the looming threat of the movie industry leaving us, an affordable housing shortage, and nearly a dilapidated convention center that ranks 22nd in the nation, in a city that's the second-largest in the nation. It almost feels like the working people in this city lack the respect from its leaders, and it's sad. I really do hope and pray that those of you trying to delay this project have a change of heart and consider working-class families when you vote today. So please, with your consideration, we ask you to.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Ernesto Medrano and John
Go ahead. And so once you get to the podium, you don't need to wait. I know it's a little bit different than the regular meeting, because there are multiple items that were open, but once you get to the podium, feel free to start, and we'll begin your one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning, Council President Harris, Dawson, members of council, and Ron Seamus Jr., coordinator at Teamsters Local 96. I'm here speaking on behalf of Chris Griswold, president of Teamsters Joint Council 42. We represent the skilled trade workers at the Los Angeles Convention Center, are a part of 250,000 members and retirees that make up Teamsters Joint Council 42, the vast majority who reside here in Los Angeles. Our members at the convention center earn a dignified wages that keep them and their families housed. Teamsters have some of the best contracts and pension plans in the nation, and expansion opens up more opportunities for Angelenos to work in the convention center and enjoy the benefits of a Teamsters contract. An investment in the expansion equals an investment in LA working families. Let me be clear, the so-called alternative option put forth by council member Katie Ursosky is not good. It is a stall distraction that is a step backward. It's threatened good union jobs, billions in economic opportunity, and our city's reputation as a global leader. Labor, business, and community stands united. The third option is unacceptable. The time for debate is over. The only reasonable choice is to approve the original convention center expansion and modernization project. Thank you.
Okay, before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up John Lehman, Edgar Castañeda, Nolan Marshall, and Rich Sarian.
So once you get to the podium, you can go ahead and start, because there's only one item. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is John Cooley. I'm the president of District Council 36 of the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades and a proud member of Local 831 Trade Show Installers. We're gathered here today for one thing. Everyone behind me, this rail, is here to see what kind of leaders we have in the city of Los Angeles. Do we have leaders that have foresight and vision that are going to put us ahead, or do we have leaders that are going to let the convention center continue to stagnate, status quo, and kick the can down the road for the future generations? I am strongly urging you guys to go ahead and vote yes on this today. Thank you.
I'm John Lehman, business representative, IOT Local 33. I'm speaking to you today in full support of the expansion of the LA Convention Center. This project has been discussed for far too long. The time is now to get it done. This will result in union jobs with area standard wages. These union jobs will give local families and youth healthcare and benefits that we all deserve. These union jobs are direct career pathway into longstanding careers for the youth who live in this city. We've waited long enough. Vote yes on the expansion today. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Edgar Castañeda. I'm a representative of Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters, representing 5,000-plus members here down the street at 1645 Main Street here in Chinatown. This project is critical. It will create thousands of mortgage-paying jobs, help recover from losses in foot track, and generate millions in general fund revenue. Timely action is essential to fully leverage the opportunity presented by global attendees visiting downtown LA, while highlighting the diverse mosaic of small businesses that make our neighborhood unique, that remain in the community, striving long after my fellow union brothers are done. Downtown LA is truly the heart of our city. It is time to reinvest in the vital infrastructure to ensure long-lasting economic benefits and open up new opportunities, not just for downtown, but for the entire Los Angeles region. Thank you for your continued leadership in moving this project forward. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. I'm Rich Sarian. I'm with the South Park Business Improvement District, Social District, and we house the convention center. We've lost the entertainment industry. It's gone. Atlanta lost it too, though, so it's okay. We can capitalize on tourism. Conventions and conferences are changing. The entertainment industry is coming down, more so to downtown Los Angeles. We could have a South by Southwest. This project has to happen. I went to school at CSUN. I majored in film, and I learned that the best projects are done on a dime and in a time crunch. We can do this. William O'Holland made a point to, you know, put a metal hose up and get water down here. We can build a convention center, and it will definitely transform this city. We've lost a lot of residents, we've lost a lot of business, but that can be our past, and we can make a great future with a vote for this convention center. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up the last two names that signed up for public, or for item 15, Susan Holly and Jen Smithum.
Good morning, still. I feel very lucky. My name is Nolan Marshall III. I'm the president and CEO of the Social District, and I get to speak before you twice today. I could not emphasize more that this project is economic infrastructure, one-to-one. That's what film tax credits pay in terms of the investment from the state into the film tax credits. This project is two-to-one. California competes tax credits, cost per job acquisition is $47,000 per job. The cost per job acquisition for this is $37,000 per job. These numbers come from the economic impact analysis that's buried somewhere in all of your reports, and I don't know why it's buried. But these numbers are numbers that you all should have, and if you're evaluating this project as you should, as economic infrastructure, it's a no-brainer. If you care about jobs, if you care about housing, if you care about education, criminal justice reform, any of those issues that any of you may care about, you have to invest in your economic infrastructure.
Hi, good morning. I'm Suzanne Holly. I'm from the DTLA Alliance. First of all, I just want to thank Council President Harris Dawson for his leadership earlier this week in his op-ed, saying, "We must do this project, we must do this full project now." And we can figure out a way to do it. I was at the Budget Committee earlier this week, and I heard a lot of hand-wringing about the cost and the timeline, but the deal breaker, the deal breaker was that the city is not competent enough to do this. Are we really saying that we can't have nice things because the city is too broke to fix it? Aren't you the city? Isn't that your job to fix that? Isn't that why we elected you? I'm asking you to act like world-class leaders, so we can have a world-class city and get this project done. Thank you.
Hello, this is Jen Smithun. I represent the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. I'd like to request an additional minute, as we have a community impact statement on this at the discretion of the chair.
I'm sorry, which neighborhood council are you from, sir?
Downtown Los Angeles.
And it was filed with the clerk's office?
It was.
Just one minute. All right, we have it, so, yes.
Thank you. Could I start my tone again? Okay, as I said, my name is Jen Smithun. I'm president of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, speaking on behalf of the council. It's good to see you all again, yes, again, because we've been doing this for two years. This is our third community impact statement on the subject, and we've all been in support every time. We hear a lot about timeline risks as the city council drags its feet, and this group is rightfully worried about risk, but with a phased approach, we plan on mitigating that. The biggest risk of all is the risk of doing nothing and letting our convention center fall apart and become unusable, a blight on the neighborhood. Make no mistake, if the council votes against the expansion today, that's exactly what they are deciding. There is no other feasible option on the table, despite the recommendations of the Budget Committee. This city needs leadership. We need one of you to stand up and say, like some of you did outside this morning, we need to say, "This project is going to happen, it's going to work, and if we come across problems along the way, we're going to solve those problems, and we're going to move forward." Taking the additional minute here. But doing nothing is unacceptable. Downtown is struggling. Since the pandemic, the DTLA community is united, is united. Residents, employees, business owners, and unions are all here, strongly backing this project. Everyone representing downtown wants this. Downtown LA is the economic engine of Los Angeles. We are the golden goose of Southern California, and this convention center is an investment in our economic future. The money brought here is not to just downtown, but to the whole city. At a time when we see few proactive investments, we need something to believe in. Well, I believe that we're going to get this done. I've never seen downtown more united. Please vote to expand the convention center. It is go time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erica Bowman. I have been a bartender at the Compass Levy, Los Angeles Convention Center, for over 15 years now, and I'm a proud member of the Unite Here Local 11. Now, my job is very important to me, as most of everyone else's jobs are also. But today, I stand here in full support of the expansion of the Los Angeles Convention Center. I know there are concerns about the cost and timelines, but I also know what it is at stake when the city hesitates. With this expansion, the Los Angeles Convention Center can host bigger events and more often, and give even more people like me the opportunity and the ability to support their families. This project can mean real opportunity for workers in the hospitality industry and create consistency for the hospitality workers here in Los Angeles. I urge that, well, if I can get just 30 seconds more.
So we have to give everybody the same amount of time, but if you wrap it up in a sentence, just.
I will. All right. All right. Ensure that we want everyone to make sure that this, the city, Los Angeles City growth, works for the prosperity of everyone here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning, and thank you. Tom Davis, President of the California IOTC Council and Chair of the L.A. County Federation Labor. I'm here in strong support and ask for your support of the convention center expansion and modernization. We, no, actually, you, have the opportunity to move this city into the 20th century, 21st century, by making this investment. We have the opportunity to take pride in the facility and the city and the good-paying middle-class jobs that this project will be bringing forward. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, as you've heard before, to build our community into something that each and every one of us can be proud of, can take pride in. You've heard us speak about the importance of this project. For those who are looking for entry into the entertainment industry and the construction industry, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Council President, all the names have been called for item 15.
All right. Thank you so much to everybody who came and presented. We'll begin our deliberation on this matter by hearing from our Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Matt Zabo, also Gary Lee Moore, who we've panelled as a consultant on this project, from DWP, Mr. David Hanson, from the Board, from the Bureau of Engineering, Katie Doherty, and from APC LA, Stuart Marks, and from WebCor, Mr. Jeet, and forgive me, Mr. Jeet, for not even attempting the name. Where's our CAO? Oh, there you are. All right, we're ready. We're ready. It's prime time.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Matt Zabo, City Administrative Officer, here to present on our updated report on the Los Angeles Convention Center Expansion Project. I will at, actually, no, I'm going to hold on that. At some point, I'm going to need to make an amendment as to what was recommended on the agenda. We did issue two updated reports based on late-breaking information, and I will detail that in a moment. Thank you very much. So, we're going to start just with a little context. I'm going to get to the main points, and then we'll open it up for questions. This has been a long process, as this body and multiple committees have been considering whether to move forward with the convention center expansion project. Today, we are presenting, and you have before you updated pricing information, that we received from the proposed developer, and we are seeking direction from this body as to whether we should proceed with the project or terminate the project. So, to provide, just to give you an update as to what is new from the discussions that we had in committees, both the Budget Committee and the Economic Development Jobs Committee, the report that you received this morning had a number of changes. The, as a result of the city team negotiating pretty much around the clock with APC LA, the proposed developer, we have secured, and with our partners at DWP, a reduction in construction costs, a reduction in city retained costs. We have updated projections on signage revenue and updated projections on the interest rate. The revised construction costs, the report revises those down by $83 million. This is due in large part to reductions in scope from that which the DWP is responsible for. There are other reductions as well that were offered by the developer. We've also revised, as of course, as the construction costs go down, the city retained costs, the contingencies required by the city also would be reduced, so we reduced those by 13 million. There has been, and I will detail this a little bit later in the presentation, a long discussion, both locally and with the state of California, about signage. We have settled on a projection that would only require, or that would only allow, the city to do onsite signage for onsite advertising for the freeway-facing signs, and that projection provides an additional $11 million annually. And then, lastly, we have revised the borrowing costs down from 4.84% to 4.6%. That is based on updated interest rate assumptions, consistent with current market conditions. Rates have moved lower by approximately 20 basis points over the past month. On Wednesday, the Federal Reserve lowered the overnight rate by 25 basis points, a quarter of a percent, and is projecting 50-basis-point reduction, an additional 50-basis-point reduction by the end of the calendar year in 2025. So, combined, these revisions that you have before you in the report reduce the overall costs by over $500 million and move the average annual general fund impact from the $111 million, which was in our August 29 report, to $89 million today.
We're going, folks, we need to hold your applause, boos, hisses, whatever it's going to be, because we need to get through this. It's Friday, and folks got to get going. So, if you will kindly let us get through this proposal and discussion without interruption.
I will, thank you, Mr. President. I will quickly move through the details of what is before you. The expansion would add 190,000 square feet of contiguous exhibit hall space, 39,000 square feet of meeting room space, and a 95,000-square-foot multipurpose space. The modernization, if, just for those that haven't been steeped in this project, you can see from this aerial what it is attempting to do. It is attempting to connect the West Hall, which is a 50-year-old building, to the South Hall, which is a 30-year-old building, over Pico, to add a hall where you see that space. That is also what makes this project extraordinarily complicated and extraordinarily costly. So, this is what you'll see by the end. This is where we will be according to the current schedule by the time of the 2028 Olympics, and then the project, the interior work of the project would be finished in early 2029. The economic impact of the project, there's been much discussion about this. Before we proceeded, before my office proceeded with reports recommending a pathway, we did conduct economic analysis on the impact of an expansion. The expansion would create 13,300 jobs during the expansion, 2,153 annual net new jobs, bring in at least 500,000 additional visitors over the first 10 years, and generate $652 million in general fund tax revenue over the 30-year period that we would be paying the bonds. So, the recommendations for you today are to either proceed with the phased delivery of the project as proposed according to the committed cost that has been provided to you, and to proceed with issuing the debt to cover the cost of the project, or to terminate the project. We are at the end of the line, and a decision does need to be made today. The, I want to review the updated project costs briefly, and then we can go into this in more detail with questions. The overall cost of the project, the direct cost of the project, is $2.62 billion. That is made up of the preconstruction costs, the construction costs, and then the city retained costs. The preconstruction costs, that's the money that we needed to invest to get us to this point. Of that $82 million of initial early works, early works agreement activities, we have expended approximately $54 million. We, it has been structured this way so that the city owns the details, owns the plans and the design, but we have spent $54 million to get to where we are today. The construction cost itself has been reduced slightly from $2.035 billion in previous reports, down to $1.95 billion. And again, that is largely due to DWP costs being reduced fairly substantially, as the department has made further assessments as to what is required. And I would, the DWP is here and can answer questions about how they got to their reduced projection. In addition to reducing their, in addition to reducing the scope of work that the Department of Water and Power has determined would be necessary for this project, they have also resolved, or have a plan to resolve certainly the issues related to other projects, the Valley Metro Project, the work at the Port of Los Angeles and in the Palisades as well. And I would defer to the department to detail the resolution there. As it relates to city retained costs, the city retained costs, this is the contingency cost. So, there are contingencies within the project budget of that $1.95 billion, and then there are contingencies that we are holding outside of the project budget. We're holding 10% for relief events. We're holding 5% for changes in scope. It is, it is our hope that this 385 million of that 553, it would not be tapped into to a great extent, but we do need to set aside, and we do need to plan for that contingency being used in order to deliver the project on time. That is part of the project. The other portion relates to a robust project construction management team of multiple consultants, technical consultants, signage consultants, management consultants, that will supplement the staff at the Bureau of Engineering and other staff to do the work and the analysis that needs to be done to ensure the project is delivered on time. As it relates to the financing costs, I do need to spend a little bit of time about, on this. Again, the $2.26 billion is the, we will finance that cost. We will not be paying from the general fund debt service until 28, 29. We will be using capitalized interest for that. What that means is basically, we will be borrowing to pay the initial costs, so that is added. We'll be borrowing to pay the initial debt service, so that will be added to our overall debt service, and then there are some issuance costs. So, the total amount to be financed for this project would be just over $3 billion. The assumed interest rate is 4.6%. As I said, that is down 0.2%, 20 basis points, just over 20 basis points from the previous projection of 4.84%. That has a savings to the city of about $130 million. As I said, rates on Wednesday were reduced, and we do expect additional rate reductions before the end of the calendar year. That means that the average annual debt service, and this is debt service, not general fund impact, is $171 million. So, that, that's the average annual. We will talk in a moment about how that relates to what the city pays out of its general fund. As it relates to debt capacity, when we're asking the questions, beyond can the city afford this, does the city have the capacity to issue this much debt? We, the city has adopted and has very conservative practices as it relates to debt issuance. Our financial policies dictate that no more than 6% of our general fund revenue can be used for debt service. We are currently at 2.4%. So, this chart shows what the impact would be of our annual debt service under the limit. The line across the top is our debt limit, and if we added the debt service from this project, it would increase in fiscal '31, our debt, our debt service to 4.03% of projected general fund revenues. So, it does, it does use more of our capacity, but it is, it is well within our financial policies. As it relates to revenue, how we're going to pay for this, we'll be paying for this through direct revenue and indirect revenue, and I need to be very clear that the direct revenue and the indirect revenue will not fully cover the cost of the debt service. So, there will be, for the entirety of the period that we are paying debt service, a general fund impact. As it relates to the direct revenue, we will be securing and dedicating the revenue from the events at the convention center, from parking at the convention center, and from signage at the convention center that will be part of the project, will be established as part of the project. We are projecting an annual average revenue from, directly from the project, to be $120 million average over 30 years. That will increase over time. As it relates to indirect revenues, when we're talking about indirect revenues, we're talking about tax revenue. The economic analysis suggests that the additional visitors, additional hotel night stays will yield $652 million net new general fund revenue over 30 years as a result of the expansion. So, there was a base case, a status quo case, and then a case assuming the expansion with the 83 new events, additional events, and the larger conventions, and the larger capacity and additional visitors, and it yields the $652 million. So, when you take the cost of the project and then take out the revenue, we get to the net general fund impact. What will we be paying out of the general fund in order to facilitate this project? So, the total revenue, the direct, the direct revenue and the indirect revenue, and these are, again, our 30-year averages, is $142 million. The costs averaged, including, which is debt service and operating costs, we do need to include operating costs in that figure because that, if we're assuming all of the revenue from the convention center, we need to cover the operating costs as well, and that would lead to an average annual net general fund impact of $89 million. However, I do need to be very clear about this, that $89 million is an average annual general fund impact. That assumes we hit all of our direct and indirect revenue targets. $89 million does not represent the maximum the general fund will be on the hook to pay, or could be on the hook to pay, particularly in the early years. This chart shows the estimated net general fund impact by fiscal year, and under our new projections, it would peak at $147 million net general fund impact in 2031. That is the first year that the city would be obligated to pay debt service on both series of bonds, and then it would slowly decrease after that. Getting to the question, then, of where are we financially, and can we consider a project like this? How could we possibly afford that? This is our four-year outlook. We published the four-year outlook as a, after the budget is adopted. As you know, we had a very... As you know, we had a very, very large gap to close in this year's budget. This budget was balanced largely in structural ways, and our adopted budget outlook assumes that those structural changes will hold. Our current outlook projects a $91 million gap, a $91 million deficit for fiscal '27, '28, structural balance in '27, '28, and then surpluses of $238 million and $453 million in fiscals '29 and '30. So when we're asking ourselves the question, if the city is going to be taking on an additional $147 million in, in general fund obligations in, in fiscal '29, '30, will we have the capacity to cover that? And certainly, our revenue growth should far, far exceed that additional general fund obligation. It, it absolutely will require trade-offs, and we would have 147 million fewer dollars to spend on other things, but our current outlook, our current four-year outlook shows a $1.2 billion increase in projected revenues from our current fiscal year to fiscal '29, '30. So again, if we, if we take our current projections...
before we'll get an announcement from them on the overhead.
May I have your attention? This is LAU Security Service Division. The alarm on the second floor has been verified to be a false alarm. Thank you for your cooperation.
All right.
May I have your attention? This is LAU Security Service Division. The alarm on the second floor has been verified to be a false alarm. Thank you for your cooperation.
All right. False alarm from the second floor. Let's proceed. Mr. Zabel.
Okay, very good. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much. So, as it relates to the net general fund impact, if you lay that over what our current outlook projections are, you can see, if you look at 20, 28, 29, it's the first year with the, the red bar at the bottom. That red bar represents the amount that we would pay, that the, there would be the net general fund impact to pay the debt service, the first year we would be paying debt service. We are currently projecting a $238 million surplus. Again, that surplus, again, assumes that essentially a status quo budget. There will certainly be pressures and, and desires to increase our expenditures beyond what we are currently spending. So that is, those will change and these projections will change as we consider our fiscal '27 and '28 budget undoubtedly. But, so these are, this is a snapshot as to where we are right now in fiscal '29, '30, that net general fund impact would increase to 113 million, which is within our current projected surplus of 453 million. This project is not without significant risks. We've discussed the, the risks extensively in committee. There are a number of risks, the, related to schedule. There has been significant work that has happened with the Department of Water and Power to reduce the risks, but they still exist. It is absolutely critical that if this project is to proceed, that the city, that the city hit its marks in addition to the developer hitting their marks. There are approvals that are required. If we are late in approvals, if we fail to perform as required by the contract, the city is on the hook for that. It could cause delays, it could jeopardize Olympic readiness, it could cause us to dip into the contingencies that we've set aside. So I cannot stress that enough. If, if this project does move forward, the city must be organized to hit all of its marks and to meet its obligations. Without, without question, the greatest risk is the Olympic readiness. This project absolutely must be completed, at least the first phase of this project must be completed well in advance of the 2028 Games. The current schedule has the project to be Olympic-ready by, by March 31st, the exclusive, the exclusive period for LA 28 to take control of the convention center, which is a venue, not only a venue for events, but it is also a venue for supporting events that will happen in Crypto.com Arena. That is June 1st, and, and so there is a very, very small margin for error on the schedule in order for this project to be Olympic-ready before, before the Olympics. The signage revenue risks, as, as I detailed previously, our initial report had projected a much, much more robust revenue coming in from our, our digital signage program. We had, and we had projected $61 million average for the digital signage program, which included two freeway-facing signs. There was an effort to secure an exemption from state approval in Sacramento, and there was significant work put into seeking, to securing that exemption. The, the resulting legislation would, did not facilitate the exemption that we needed for the full revenue, so we did need to revise our revenue down to allow for only onsite advertising on the freeway-facing signs that reduced the average annual revenue by 23 million, 690 million over 30 years. If this project is to move forward, I would strongly recommend that, that, that revenue be reexamined and our, and we look at the opportunity for either a, a future exemption or resolving the issues, resolving the hurdles that would prevent the, the city from maximizing its revenue from the freeway-facing signage. So when we're considering this project, there is also a risk for those who are committed to see this project built, there is a significant risk in delay. In February of 2020, this project had an estimated construction cost of 1.1 billion. In November of 2023, it rose to 1.4 billion, and the project is nearly, this is just the construction cost, is nearly $2 billion today. These cost increases have been driven largely by inflation in labor and materials, and as the base costs increase, so do the city-held contingencies. These are costs that will continue to increase. Delaying the project, if you are committed to seeing this project built, will not reverse the inflation in labor and steel. There is no delivery model that, that lowers the cost of construction itself. In fact, I do need to say, and I, and I will conclude very shortly, Mr. President, as we're talking about delivery models, this project has been discussed and before, has been before this body multiple times over more than a, more than a decade. Before I became CIO, the model that was being considered was a public-private partnership. That public-private partnership would have financed not just the cost of construction, but the cost of operations, the cost of maintenance. Everything would have been financed, and it would have been financed with private investment, with private equity. That was a vastly, vastly more expensive model, dramatically more expensive than what you have before you, and that was, that was a prerequisite to moving this project forward, was moving away from that highly expensive, highly speculative model where the city would prepay for all of the risk. So we, we, we just need to keep that in mind as it relates to whether we do this project now or whether we consider this project in four years from now. So that goes back to our, our basic recommendations, members, and it, we get to the decision point. The city team has taken this as far as we can. We have worked to provide you the best possible information so that you can make a decision. Is the expansion possible? Yes, it is. Are there schedule risks? Yes, there are schedule risks. Will it provide substantial economic benefits? Yes. Can we afford it? Yes, but not without future trade-offs. We will be committing funds, not just in 2030, but for 30 years after that, to support this expansion. So now it's the ultimate judgment call that only you can make. We need to determine the future of the convention center today. If you believe that this project is too costly and too risky, that the costs and risks outweigh the benefits, then you should terminate the project today and proceed with the minor improvements outlined in the Budget and Finance Report. If you're committed to this project and believe that we need to get it done, but are also concerned that it is too costly today, the solution to that problem is not to delay it for another four years. Delay will exacerbate that problem, not solve it. So if you're committed to the project and believe that the jobs and the economic benefits are worth the costs and the risks, then you should vote to approve the project and move forward today. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll look for questions.
All right, again, a reminder to hold your applause, and I think Mr. McCosker has a clarifying point to what's in front of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is just a procedural point. We do have item 15D, which is a motion by Harris, Dawson, McCosker, Hutt, Price, Nazarian, seconded by Geraldo, which has a subsection 1B with numbers, and based on the presentation we just heard, I believe I'm going to ask for, I will ask for, a friendly amendment to 1B to read approved total project costs of up to and replace 2.62 billion for the existing 2.72 billion. It goes on to read inclusive, inclusive of up to 82.4 million for pre-construction costs, up to, I'm going to say 1.95 billion to replace 2.35 billion for design and construction, a developer fee of 35 million, and up to, and a point of clarification, will it read 533 million for city retain costs in lieu of 566?
It would be 553, yes.
553 million to replace the 566. I would ask for the makers of the motion to accept that as a friendly and the second order to accept that as a friendly.
Accept it as a friendly. For who, for Mr. McCosker?
Yeah.
Yeah. A council member.
That was actually the first thing that I was going to bring up. Is there a reason why we switch from using periods to commas? Is that a typo? Is that supposed to be million? And I, I was going to ask that both for 15D Section B as well as today's agenda, making sure that all these numbers match.
Yes, thank you. That is, that is a typo. That was intended to be a, a period, not a, not a comma.
Okay, and it's, okay.
It is a typo.
Just making sure.
Yes.
All right, and, and we'll accept...
Then I can second.
Okay. One more time?
I can second his amendment.
Okay, and we'll accept that amendment as friendly unless any of the makers of the motion have an objection. Members and staff of this city and folks who have joined us today and folks who are watching this conversation, I want everybody to know, you are watching in real life a council dig in deep and do its job. This is a big decision, perhaps one of the biggest decisions that the city will make. It is a decision that if it goes in one direction has at least 30-year implications on the budget and beyond. Either way, this decision has an impact on our city for generations to come that Angelenos will feel long after all of us are gone. I want to start by complimenting each and every member of this council, no matter where they stand on this issue. Our job as council members is to look under the hood, to kick the tires, to examine, to question, to debate scenarios, and that has happened in spades, and I think everybody has done an amazing job asking the tough questions, interrogating the developers, interrogating the staff, interrogating each other, and it is exactly what democracy is supposed to look like. Here in Los Angeles, we don't kick you off of television because you make bad jokes about us or you disagree with us. This is the kind of debate that, that, that we encourage. And in our society and in this city, when we have tough questions, we have debates in public with each other, and, and sometimes we raise our voices, sometimes we are very impassioned, but all of that is driven by a love for the city and a commitment to its future. And I want to begin our discussion today, and I know it'll be a vigorous discussion, I want to call on our, our budget chair who just went through the process of, of being the tip of the spear and negotiating a very, very tough budget, because we're in a very tough budget environment, and has from the beginning been one of the main members of this council, taking a hard, hard look at this decision that's before us. I have an opinion about the decision, you know, I want to thank the folks at the Westside Current, they published it for us earlier this year, but it, I did not come to that opinion easily or do not take that decision very, very lightly. I understand and appreciate that others may look at the same set of facts and come to a different conclusion. There is plenty there, there is plenty there to leave you at the end of it at another place. And so with that, I hope that that frames our discussion today. And, you know, I just want to say to our, to the members in the gallery, this is not an issue of angels and devils. This is not an issue of people who care about the city and people who don't. This is a very, very tough question that all of these members have had to struggle with for many, many years, frankly. I, I just anecdotally, in my first 90 days in, on this council, I sat in a committee... and negotiating a very, very tough budget because we're in a very tough budget environment and has, from the beginning, been one of the main members of this council, taking a hard, hard look at this decision that's before us. I have an opinion about the decision. You know, I want to thank the folks at the West Side Current. They published it for us earlier this year. But I did not come to that opinion easily or do not take that decision very, very lightly. I understand and appreciate that others may look at the same set of facts and come to a different conclusion. There is plenty there. There is plenty there to leave you at the end of it at another place. And so with that, I hope that that frames our discussion today. And, you know, I just want to say to the members in the gallery, this is not an issue of angels and devils. This is not an issue of people who care about the city and people who don't. This is a very, very tough question that all of these members have had to struggle with for many, many years, frankly. I just anecdotally, in my first 90 days on this council, I sat in a committee and heard Miguel Santana and Don Liu and other folks tell us that we were about to have a vote on the convention center. That was 10 years ago that that happened. And so today, I hope that what we have is some finality with regard to this iteration of the discussion and that after we're done, we continue with the business of running this city. And so with that, I want to begin our discussion by hearing from Councilmember Yarostowski, our Budget Chair.
Thank you, Council President. I have somewhat lengthy remarks, but I promise they'll be the only time I speak today. Colleagues, we all want a stronger downtown. We all want Los Angeles to host world-class events. The convention center plays a really important role in that vision. But the question before us today is not whether to invest in the convention center. The question is whether we commit to a nearly $3 billion expansion on terms that put our city's finances and our basic city services at risk for decades. This expansion is unrealistic, it's unaffordable, and it's fiscally irresponsible. It puts our city at severe risk, and I want to explain exactly how. We spent a lot of time in committee trying to get all the facts on the table, and the facts that we were able to glean are clear. This project is being forced into an Olympic-driven deadline that is unrealistic on its face. Over the next 910 days, crews would have to work six days a week, every week, with only 20 days afloat, days and several more for bad weather and other contingencies. That's approximately five weeks of slack in a 130-week construction schedule. Even the smallest disruption, supply chain delays, weather, labor shortages, or the city's own approval process, which we all know what that is, will push us off schedule. The contract itself identifies 27 relief events, which are reasons for delay not covered by the contract and for which we, as a city, are financially responsible for cost increases. Fifteen of those relief events hinge on the city, meaning its own obligations and time. This means that if and when DBS or BOE or DOT too slowly moves to issue a permit or when DWP's work on the electrical piece interferes with the contractor's construction work, the liability falls squarely on us. Taxpayers carry the cost of delay, and the risks don't end there. If the project slips past March of 2028, Olympic and Paralympic events already booked at the convention center will have to relocate. LA 28's incremental additional costs of relocation and any costs associated with lost revenues from, say, decreased ticket revenues, that falls on the city. At the same time, we're prepared to waste an additional $30 million on a start-stop construction plan, clearing the site for the Games and then resuming work later. All of this is supposed to happen while DWP is still trying to design and deliver new power infrastructure, which will take DWP staff away from priorities like reconstruction of the Palisades, housing projects across all of our districts, and priority metro projects. The schedule just does not work. We are gambling billions of taxpayer dollars on a best-case scenario that everyone in this chamber knows is highly unlikely to come to pass. We can wish for it, but we know it's not going to happen. This is not careful planning, it's dangerous, wishful thinking. I haven't even mentioned cost. The price has ballooned from 1.4 billion to 2.7 billion in less than two years. Now we're hearing, as of this morning, that it might be 2.6 billion. But that's important. It tells you all you need to know about one of the main issues with this contract, which is that it's not a firm fixed-price contract. This means that the cost we pay can rise. And I'm telling you, as a former land use lawyer, as a real estate lawyer, it's going to. When you account for the life of the bonds, we're looking at a minimum of $5 billion in taxpayer money. It's only going to go up. As you've heard, it's an average of about 90 or 100 million a year from the general fund for the next three decades. And that figure factors in all the revenue the project will generate. That's our annual net general fund hit. In the early years, it's closer to $160 million. That obligation is going to eat up all projected general fund growth for the foreseeable future. I am not making that up. It comes directly from the CIO's report. So what does that mean? Colleagues, it means that when we want to accelerate the hiring of police officers or expand the fire department, there will be no money left to do it. If we want to repair the sidewalks that are costing us more than $100 million a year in liability or build new bike lanes in walkable communities so that we're in compliance with HLA, there will be absolutely no money to do it. There's no money now, but there certainly won't be. When members want to start a public bank, restore funding for senior meals, pay for immigration defense, or hire more crossing guards to protect kids walking to school, there's not going to be money for it. If you think city services are bad now, and I think all of us would agree that they suck, and you thought maybe one day we would have funding to restore service, I have bad news. It's going to get worse. We aren't going to be able to afford even the level of service we have right now, which is crap. And it's not our city employees' fault. It's that we've been hollowing out, sweeping vacancies for years. We've been underinvesting in our city workforce who do the work of providing core city services. Every new dollar of growth in our general fund will already be committed to paying for this project for years to come. And that assumes growth. We are assuming growth. If we hit a recession or a slowdown, which we know is a high likelihood of happening, we're in even more trouble. The plan depends on revenues that are shaky at best. State legislation authorizing freeway signage made things worse, as Mr. Zabo said. There's no agreement with Caltrans. Federal regulators or AEG may still block signage altogether or even penalize the city for trying. Without those revenues, the gaps between costs and revenues are only going to grow wider. So even under the best-case scenario, which is what we're seeing today, this project is going to consume every bit of financial flexibility we have. And if revenues come up short or if costs escalate further, which I think that they will, the general fund takes the hit. The cost of this project does not exist in a vacuum. We are already starting next year, already, with a $91 million structural deficit before we even see our first financial status report. The budget cycle we just went through was not an aberration. It is the new normal unless we get serious about our fiscal responsibility to the city and our constituents. At Housing and Homelessness Committee Wednesday, we heard that the city faces a new $220 million gap in homelessness services for next year without new state dollars. We are on the edge of a fiscal cliff just with regard to homelessness alone. And remember, LA is also on the hook for Olympic overruns. The first 270 million comes from the city, the next 270 million comes from the state, and then anything beyond that is ours again. It's a blank check. The convention center bill starts coming due the very same year we could be forced to absorb those Olympic overages. And by taking on the debt that this project requires, we are in effect running up our credit card, limiting our ability to borrow those bills or any else we decide is worth investing in for decades. We literally are talking about putting City Hall, the LAPD headquarters, and your local LAPD and LAFD stations up as collateral for this loan. We just closed a billion-dollar budget gap. And to do so, this council made really tough trade-offs. But we weren't the only ones. Our city employees, including our sworn police officers and a lot of civilians, stepped up too. They agreed to sacrifice to keep things running. They accepted furloughs and unpaid days to protect services. So how can we ask our workforce to take unpaid time and in the same breath claim we have enough money to spend at least $5 billion on an expansion we know we can't afford? And here is the kicker. Every single one of those labor agreements and those contracts is up for negotiation in 2028, the very year we start paying debt service on this project. At the exact moment when our workers, our city workers, will be seeking raises and better benefits, the city will have locked itself into massive new obligations that squeeze out room for anything else. What's more, we're facing ballot box measures that propose to end our gross receipts tax. That's more than $800 million annually, or nearly 10% of our general fund. Another ballot measure could strip away the document transfer tax. These are two of the seven major revenue categories in the city's budget. You'll notice I haven't yet mentioned the Trump administration in part because we can't even fathom how bad the federal cuts are going to be. A yes vote will tie our hands financially for decades while our existing obligations are about to explode. Colleagues, I've heard the arguments about the opportunity cost of inaction, and those are valid. We should have done this 10 years ago. We really should have. But one of the arguments that seems to be carrying the day is that our predecessors failed to act for years. And if we don't act now, the price is just going to keep going up. And that's true. But when you can't afford something, you don't buy it because it will be more expensive later. You buy what you can afford. We have to weigh the very real costs and risks that Mr. Zabo outlined. They're right in front of us. They are not hypothetical. They are enormous. They threaten our ability to deliver the most basic services for all of our constituents. Most of our constituents don't even know that this is happening. If they did, they'd probably be upset about it. None of us wants to say no to downtown. I don't, I certainly don't. But there's a difference between saying no to this expansion and saying yes to a smarter path. That is what your Budget and Finance Committee recommended on Tuesday. Yes to upgrades and modernization, yes to addressing deferred maintenance, not minor changes, hundreds of millions of dollars of changes, yes to making the convention center functional and beautiful for the Olympic and Paralympic Games, and yes to expansion after 2028 through a competitive bid that allows us to manage costs, secure revenue, and deliver the project responsibly. That's exactly what the Budget and Finance Committee recommended. This path would invest hundreds of millions of dollars in downtown right now. It would protect the city's finances, and it would preserve our ability to meet the needs of our neighborhoods, all the other needs of our neighborhoods and communities. I've heard some questions about where this report comes from, the recommendation that we voted on, 3 to 2 in budget, that it feels rushed and last minute. I want to tell you exactly where it came from. Back in April, 13 of us, 13 members of this body, voted in favor of a motion that asked for a value-engineered, less-expensive version of this project. We asked for a version of the project that, quote, "brings the net general fund obligation as close to zero as possible." That's what we asked for. Thirteen of us asked for that. We didn't put restrictions on what that could be, what it would look like. We just asked for what a version of this project looked like if it kept costs within a reasonable range of projected revenues. We never got that, colleagues. We never saw it. It was never given to us as an option. The CEO came back with a more expensive project with minimal value engineering? I find that completely unacceptable. Thirteen of us asked for it. We didn't get it, so I had to propose it on Tuesday. This is a difficult decision, colleagues. I recognize that. This is again why your Budget and Finance Committee sought to put this alternative modernization plan before us so we had a third option. I think it's a real shame that we're not voting on that today. I'm closing, I promise. This has been hard, and I have the deepest respect for my colleagues and community members who are advocating passionately for this project. I also recognize where the council is on this. And I just want to close by saying that I, as much as all of you, hope that this is a success. I really do. I mean it, truly. And no matter what, we as a body are all in this together, and I will do everything in my power, working with all of you, to make sure that it is, to find cost savings and keep things on track. If I have to call the head of BOE or DWP myself to get a permit approved, I'll do it. Because this thing has to succeed. There is no other option. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Yarostowski. Councilmember Rahman. No? Okay. Councilmember Padilla, is this, are you still up here from before? Okay, Councilmember Padilla.
I don't really know who's going to answer this, but here's my question. The LA Times mentioned that this was going to potentially keep the undergrounding utilities for the East San Fernando Valley Light Rail project to be delayed. Can you please tell me if this is true? And, yeah, is this true? How is this mitigated? What's the plan?
Sure, I'm going to ask LADWP to address that.
Good morning, Council President, members of the committee, members of the council. My name is Dave Hanson. I'm the head of the power system for DWP. With me today is Jason Hills, our Director of Power Engineering, as well as Emile Abdel Shaheed, our Director for Power New Business. In specific response to your undergrounding question, we do have a lot of undergrounding projects that are moving forward right now. So the bulk of the work that's related to the convention center, for us, it's building a new network station as well as undergrounding. I think we're all aware of what's going on in the Palisades with undergrounding. That's new work to us. It was in the budget, but it was for a few years from now. So we had to escalate that so we could be able to address those issues now. We do have the ability to hire contractors to do core work. So the question that's been presented to us is what is the risk to this? If we do the undergrounding work for the convention center, it's going to put a strain on all of our resources. We've been working closely with APC LA for them to support the underground construction portion of the work.
I'm sorry, who is that? APC LA, who is that?
APC LA is the contractor, the project manager for the convention center. Mr. Stu, can you wave?
Yeah, okay.
So they're going to do the underground construction portion, and then we'll come back behind them and pull in the electrical cables. So as long as they can commit to do that underground construction, and we're only on the hook for cables, we should be able to collaborate with our labor partners at IBW Local 18 to put a contract in place to be able to support the work and minimize impact to other core projects.
Okay, so, yeah, because this project is supposed to be done by 2031. So you mentioned the Palisades. I know we have some things that we want to do at the port, plus the East San Fernando Valley Light Rail project, and now this timeline attached to the convention center. Will all of this continue to be on timeline if we approve this convention center project today? The Palisades, the light rail, and even the port?
So what we've been asked to identify is a potential risk. So it's very difficult to give you a firm answer. I can tell you that anything that we do in addition to the projects that we have going right now present additional risk. Case in point, the Palisades. We had a firm commitment with the MTA projects and the East San Fernando Rail as well as three other major projects with them. But we've had to prioritize the Palisades because it's a tragedy. And tragedies trump projects. So we've had to figure out a way to be able to address everything. So for us to take on the convention center, we have been able to figure out ways that we can do all of it, but it's going to take close collaboration with our labor partners. I can't give you a firm answer on that because we have an NOC process. We have to follow with Local 18, and they're going to have some requests. But we have had internal meetings, Mr. Zabo and myself. So we will be meeting with Local 18 very shortly to see what their asks are going to be.
If their capacities are peaked, what is the Plan B? Who do you usually go to to fulfill labor demands? Because my understanding is the port, the Palisades is tragedy, and the port is grant-based pressure and fulfillment. And I have spent my entire career after college making sure that the San Fernando Valley gets its fair share and a good project that they could be proud of on Van Nuys Boulevard. So my vote is very contingent. You mentioned that, it almost kind of sounded like you're a little bit on the, with our partners in labor, you think you could reach agreements. But you did say if we can get a commitment from the contractor, can we get this contractor that this is not going to affect our other projects?
As far as the contractor commitment, I'll let Stu Marks from APC LA speak to that. That's their contractor.
Can they come to the front?
Yes. But for us, it's not so much the labor forces in the field that are the constraint. It's the engineering and drafting folks that we have that are civil servants. It takes us about two years to train these folks and get them in place. So quite honestly, we should have increased the size of that training program years ago, but we didn't. So we're doing it now. What we're going to have to put in place that we've never had before is a contract to be able to expand that design and drafting group. We have been able to do that on some of our transmission and renewable projects, but we've never done it on in-town, in-basin core work on the distribution side. So that's where we'll have to engage with Local 18 and get their buy-in.
What would be the next steps to make that happen? What did you need from this council?
It's happening.
Because everyone's taking notes, and everybody's going to want that credit. So I'm sure people are drafting motions already.
Understood.
So please tell us.
It's happening now. So we met, you know, this is a rush project, so there's a lot of stuff coming at us quickly. And just the amount of changes that have taken place this week are mind-boggling. So on Monday, when we received the information, we did have a meeting with our partners at World Airports to see if we could jump on top of a piggyback contract that they have for a potential for engineer, procurement, and construct. But now it looks like we may only need an engineering contract. So we'll be looking at fast-tracking that with city approvals. We will be speaking with the city attorney's office so that we can try to get these things done as quickly as possible. And I know we have the full support of the CIO's office. Mr. Zabo and I have met on this specifically. So it's happening now this week. And we'll get back to the council with specific asks of what we would need to be able to get that done quickly.
Where is that going to happen, in committee?
Well, the NOC process is a negotiation essentially between us and our labor partners at Local 18. Its notice of compliance is the NOC. So anytime we look at contracting out what our labor partners deem as core work, we have to engage in a process back and forth. We make agreements. Okay, we'll hire additional crews. We may bring on additional reporting locations. They'll have some conditions. We would have to offer existing civil servants. Normally, appendix B, 10% overtime for those folks that are already here as civil servants in addition, in return for them allowing us to contract it out.
I see the contractor. Do you want to talk about your commitments before I go to my next question?
Yes. My name's Stuart Marks. I'm the project executive of APC LA, with a developer that'll be entering into the contract with the city. I did want to thank Mr. Hanson and his whole team for his collaboration over the past few months, and particularly over the last week. We have reached a point where we're committed to delivering the three circuits in particular that LADWP have asked for us in order to meet those timetables without jeopardizing their other work commitments. We've committed to do that with the city, with the help and assistance of the CIO's office, Gary Lee Moore, and certain council members have been instrumental in making that happen.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I guess this is back to the CIO. Can you please elaborate on the, you know, based on your presentations, I know you brought up a lot of the assumed revenues, but what I didn't see is when these assumed revenues are going to take place. So when is, and I can see that we're gonna start paying this off closer to 2050, so to speak, but when does the assumed revenue kick in? And what is it from? Is it from the signs? Is it from the conventions? Is it from, I don't know, local restaurants that we know we're gonna also incorporate? When does it come in?
Sure. So the structure of financing this project requires that all of the revenue that is generated by the convention center after the expansion would be dedicated. We would, it would be captured as general fund revenue that we would dedicate to paying the debt service. Our schedule that we have in front of you assumes that we would start realizing revenue after the convention center project is complete. That would be in fiscal '29. So in 2029, we're assuming $37 million in revenue. The following year, it would increase to $67 million. The year after that, it would increase to $78 million, and it would increase over time.
Yeah, but what's bringing that in? Is it because by then we would have the signage? Is it because by then we would, okay, maybe we, do you want to come?
Yeah, no, it's, so there are three sources of revenue. It's from events that the convention center puts on. It's signage, the signage program, and it's parking. Those are the three main sources of revenue from the convention center. In addition to that, we are making assumptions on net new tax revenue that would be generated based on the economic activity that the expansion would produce.
Is that citywide?
Citywide. Yes.
So there's this assumption that people will come to a convention, and then it trickles out into the rest of the city?
The assumption is that there will be additional spending related to the additional events and the larger events, additional hotel room next days, and those activities generate general fund revenue that we would otherwise not see but for the expansion.
Okay. Thank you for that. Another question. How do we plan to keep the public updated on spending revenue? And most importantly, how are we gonna stay on top of proof of local hire?
I can talk about local hire.
I am gonna ask everyone, please, this is important. We could quieten them.
Yes. The project is subject to the Los Angeles Project Labor Agreement. We've agreed to that, and so has our contractor. There are specific provisions in the contract around local hiring. Inclusion, business inclusion plan is applicable to the project. That's all been agreed with BCA. And as part of that agreement, there are strict monitoring and reporting requirements to make sure that all of our obligations are fulfilled.
But I guess my question is, how are we, the public, going to be on top of knowing that these things are fulfilled? Like, do you have a dashboard? Is there gonna be a website where you actually show the percentage of folks that are being hired locally and how it really, like, you have a lot of institutional support. More institutional support than you have constituent support. But if there's this assumption that through the institutional support, there's a lot of constituent-based supports because they're member-based. So in order for me to go back to my constituents, it's why it was important for me to know about what's gonna happen to Van Nuys Boulevard, but I also need to know, how do I also showcase to my constituents that there's a way for them to feel the impact and know that the impact also hits them? And that's related to, how are we gonna have proof that you're actually hiring in Los Angeles?
There will be full transparency on all of the reports tracking our performance, and they'll all be made public. And if there's any, anything further that's required in that regard, we're certainly happy to take that on.
Okay. I did have another question. In terms of the last CIO report, I noticed that the graph only goes up to 2035. Is there any way that we can get this to go up to 2055? The one that shows how much of our debt is going to be utilized for this? It goes, I see 2035, 3.64. You know which one I'm talking about?
Yes.
Is there a reason why it didn't just go all the way to 55? To really show the scope of the generational impact this is gonna do?
We, yes, we can certainly, we can certainly provide those extended projections, yes.
Okay. All right, yeah. And then, I'm done with my questions. This is more of a statement. Council colleagues, I want everyone to really understand, you know, for, we are about to double, double our debt as a city. We've been responsible. We've done all these creative things, you know, to be fiscally sound, but let's call it what it is. We're about to take a big risk and double our debt for one project. One project. And it's not necessarily a project that is going to reduce our liabilities, which is the most pathetic and preventable part of our expenditures. But instead, we are really taking a risk on assumed revenues. A big risk on assumed revenues without really doing anything to address liabilities. So with that, I just want to say this to three council offices. To the current leaders and the future potential leaders of City Nine, Fourteen, and One, while you guys are the ones who border this, and I have my own personal opinions about the previous group who redistricted this to make three different council members be in charge of downtown, it's all gonna fall on us, this doubling of the debt. So at least on my behalf, as much as I try to be respectful to not intervene in other council offices' land use, this is different. Because you are doubling the debt for all of us. So do not be surprised, is after what happens today, this entire council feels like we are entitled to also immerse ourselves in the conversations of how this impacts land use, jobs, as well as local support. I have been very honest with everyone who is both in the crowd today and on this council that I don't want a convention center that is gonna be strictly focused on trying to bring in tourists, but that we also need to do something related to creating a space for locals, a place where locals could come and enjoy their convention and actually enjoy downtown. So I just wanted to put that out there. Because we are all Angelenos are gonna be impacted by that doubling of this debt. No further questions.
Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. The road here has not been easy, and I certainly have not been shy about sharing my frustrations with the process and the pressures that have led us here. I also want to take a moment and commend our Budget Chair for her very diligent research and her presentation of the concerns that we frankly all should share. We should, today, as a body, be talking about an alternative plan. We should be talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in immediate investment to get this convention center ready for the Olympics. And we should be talking about the possibility, including authorizing today, hundreds of millions of dollars in future MICLA obligations to fund a real project, a big project and important transformative project after the 2028 Olympics. I also know that some of our colleagues, who should be here today to have an opportunity to discuss this and provide input, were denied that chance. So I have a few questions, and I'd like to start with DWP. So back in 2023, I picked this project, sitting dead on a shelf, up and decided to try to bring some life back into it. And at that time, I ordered the developer and our city partners to get into a room and bring us something real. A real project with a real timeline and a real budget. So I'm curious to know from DWP, why is it only now, after all this time, that we are hearing about these concerns and additional hundreds of millions of dollars of costs that could have and should have been part of our discussions long ago? Can you explain to me the delay?
Yes, ma'am. Let me advance to a slide where we talk about budget. So the contractor, APC LA, houses the budget, and they have two different buckets of money that are going to address the relocations and the network station, and then for the circuit relocation. There's a portion of their buckets that they house under their budget that is work that we perform. So as far as the detail that we've provided back in April, we've essentially said for the, for the items that we were asked to provide location or estimates at that time, we were at roughly $30 million based on the network station and some relocations we had to do on Pico. We knew there were still other work, but we didn't have enough information at that time, so we didn't provide any sort of cost estimate. So $30 million was what we supplied back in April of just this year. Since then, in August, because the project is picking up speed and there was definitely an urgency, more and more information was starting to get fleshed out, so we provided the estimate of roughly $96 million for our costs. And that's related to us pulling in the cable, building the network station, and doing anything related to moving our equipment so that they could build that portion of the convention center that goes across Pico. Out of that $96 million being our cost, there's also other work that the developer needed to do to be able to build the network station. So I believe there was a $166 million figure that was making it around and being discussed, but that was never our cost. Of that $166, we were $51 million of that, and then the rest of it was developer costs and overheads and construction charges. So only since April of this year have the specifics begun to be fleshed out. I believe there was a pause in February. We were told to pause the project, if I'm remembering correctly, and we didn't resume that until the end of April or May. So we did lose about three, maybe three and a half months of fleshing out details. So really, to your point, it's only been since August that we're starting to identify what the major risks are. I believe moving forward, going back to 2023 and even as back as October of '24, it was all theoretical. And when it's theoretical, we throw loose numbers around, and things don't start to firm themselves up until we have more detail.
Thank you for that, but those loose numbers don't resemble anything near what the actual numbers are. But I do want to take a moment to pause and acknowledge, I know how busy you all were in February and beyond. But this relates to another issue that I am struggling a bit with, and that is the inconsistent information that we're getting. Just today, we've heard our CIO, our CIO say, "DWP plans to resolve certain issues in the future." I've heard you say, "This week, next week, in the future, we will be working to address these challenges." You know, when this, at the end of August, it was reported that the Palisades recovery efforts were not going to be impacted by this. But then, at the Budget and Finance Committee hearing, it was revealed that 18 designers might need to be moved off of projects like the Palisades. Yesterday, DWP committed to my team that moving forward on the convention center will not impact the Pacific Palisades. So I need a clear answer. Yes, it will, or no, it won't.
Understood. We did meet with your staff yesterday, and as much as we don't like to throw around the C-word because people can use it against us, we did give a commitment to your office that tragedy trumps projects as we reallocate our designers and drafters from other projects to support the convention center rebuild. Those folks will not come from the Palisades rebuild, as it is a tragedy and one of our top priorities.
Thank you, and I appreciate the incredible, extraordinary work that DWP has done and I know will continue to do in the Palisades and on all of our projects. Mr. Zabo, I have heard your remarks, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, that deferring the project is gonna make it less expensive. It's only going to cost more. But I want to point out a couple of things that caused me some, give me some pause on this. Under the current project, we are going to be paying workers overtime and double time to get this done on the schedule. We've seen interest rates recently dropping. And so I wonder, is there some balance, potentially? And I wonder, because we have not had an opportunity to discuss this as a council, and it hasn't come up in our committees. How does the economic uncertainty swirling around the war of attrition at the ballot box impact our ability to make decisions about this? Because I haven't, I haven't heard any analysis from you on any of that, and we've never even talked about it.
And by the, by the economic uncertainty, you're talking about the, the risk to our grocery receipts tax?
I'm talking about that. I'm talking about minimum wage ordinances. I'm talking about that entire hot mess that could have very significant impacts on our budget. So it's a two-part question. How does that impact things? And then, given that we are current, under the current project, we're gonna be paying extra to do it fast, are we actually possibly gonna save money if we were to launch the major project after the Olympics? When we don't have to pay overtime to get it done?
So a couple, a couple of things on that. On the revenue uncertainty and overall economic uncertainty, certainly the, the issue around the grocery receipts tax, if that were to pass, I mean, that, that without question provides tremendous risk. It would, it would destroy the city's current financial picture far, far beyond our capacity to cover the, the debt service. I mean, we would certainly, if we enter into this agreement and we issue the debt, we will pay the debt service over anything else. We have our pension obligations, and we have our debt service. We will pay our debt service. The consequences of the grocery receipts tax measure would trigger dramatic, beyond draconian reductions to city services. That's, it's nearly a billion dollars that would take, that would be taken out of our budget. That exists, that, that, whether we do this project or not, that risk exists. As it relates to this current project, and the, and the reason that my office has come to the recommendation of a choose-a-path-now approach, which is, which is if we're going to do this, do it now, or make the decision not to do it and do other things with those resources, is that we've been in this process, and we have expended tens of millions of dollars to, for the pre-construction work, for the site investigation, for the design, which of design, which of course we own. So could the project be done at a lower cost, potentially if it was a different project? But we have already invested $54 million to produce the plans and the preconstruction work and the design for this project. So in order to take advantage of the investment that we've already made, we would need to build this project if we want to expand the convention center. And what I'm saying is that if you take the, this project as designed, four years later, we would absolutely expect to see construction cost increases that would far, far exceed, exponentially exceed the costs that are in the plan to ensure Olympic readiness.
All right. Ms. Council President, I, I do have some comments that I'd like to make.
Yes.
Now?
Good time.
Okay, well, colleagues, thank you with that, and with that additional clarity. I appreciate you all being here. When I took office at the end of 2022, our tourist destinations were barely holding on by a thread, still struggling from the lingering pandemic, shuttered businesses lined our world famous boardwalk, Hollywood was crumbling, and development in downtown Los Angeles had come to a screeching halt, our skyline dominated by the skeletons of half-finished towers. Our city was in the headlines for all the wrong reasons, and investors and developers were fleeing from the LA market. But our convention center, along our city's signature venue, a place where the world comes together for business and culture and innovation and opportunity, continued to hold its own despite those distressing economic challenges. We all know that the convention center is a cornerstone of our tourism economy, a gateway for international visitors, and a driver of thousands of local jobs. But we also know it hasn't kept up with the demands of a competitive global marketplace. Every year, we lose tens of millions of dollars in economic opportunity to other cities with better facilities, and that means our hotels and our restaurants and our local businesses suffer, and so does our city's general fund as those tax revenues diminish. As Chair of Trade, Travel, and Tourism, I wanted to change that. I wanted to clean up our city, get us ready for the Olympics, and start driving investment back into Los Angeles. I knew that investing in us, in our local jobs, in our local business community, and in our own city's amenities and assets would be a big step in the right direction. And in my IOTC household, I can confirm from personal experience how badly needed the jobs are. So in 2023, I launched this effort to modernize our convention center. I want to show the world that investing, that LA is investing in LA, and that they should too. I want to support our mayor's vision for this project, and I want to see downtown LA thriving, because if it does, the rest of our city has a better chance to thrive too. Colleagues, no project is ever without risk, and this project has plenty. My support today is not a blank check, though. I've read Article 17 of the project agreement, and I am familiar with the termination provisions. I will be watching every expenditure on this project going forward closely, and I know some others on this council will too. So let me be clear, especially to those of you at the table. I do not want to be back here in six months, or 12 months, or two years, hearing about more price increases. I don't want to hear about claims or relief events. I don't want to hear about delays or labor disputes, and I don't want to see finger pointing between the city and the developer, period. If we are going to do this, I expect nothing but full-throttled participation and cooperation from every entity involved. And while I have deep reservations about the process that led us here, and I have very serious concerns about the economic climate, I have always fundamentally believed in this mission, and I still do today. The jobs and economic opportunities this investment will create are real, it will make our laborers more valuable, and it focuses spending on real things that make LA really cool. This project will be transformative for downtown, and I truly believe the catalyst for future investment and redevelopment. We need to bring our city back to life, and with world events looming, we don't have time to wait. So let's uplift our city, our workforce, our business community, and let's invest in making LA the modern world-class city that it should be. Thank you.
Thank you so much, counsel. Thank you, Councilmember Park, Councilmember Rahman.
Thank you so much, and I've had the opportunity to follow this issue for a number of months and listened closely to the hearings and the detailed discussion. I want to thank all of my colleagues, everyone who's at the table, the departments, as well as the public for engaging so deeply in this conversation. I will say, you know, I am the Chair of the Housing and Homelessness Committee, and over the last few months, especially since this new federal administration, but also because of changes in state funding allocations for local responses to housing and homelessness, I have been deeply alarmed by some of the numbers that I'm seeing in terms of the amount of funding that our region is going to lose and our city is going to lose to keep people who are already housed, that we struggle to house, that we spent a lot of money putting into shelters and into housing, and finally turned around for the first time over the last two years, a trend that was resulting in sharp increases in homelessness. For the first time over the last two years, we've actually seen significant decreases in the numbers of people living on the streets of Los Angeles. But all of that may be set to change, and it's scary to me. We have 3,000 people who are currently on time-limited subsidy slots, who can no longer continue on those slots because of funding cuts, who need an approximate $70 million to keep them in housing, an obligation that will taper off a bit, but will still be needed years into the future. We have 3,000 people just in the city of Los Angeles in emergency housing vouchers, which the federal government is no longer funding, and we will need $190 million to keep them in housing through 2030. We have a gap in meeting our court-ordered obligations for shelter, that is $50 million next year and continues well into the future, and a continuing cost for maintaining our existing investments in shelter, that is an annual obligation of hundreds of millions of dollars, which we've funded so far largely from state allocations, HAP allocations. Those have been cut and are uncertain into the future, and with a new governor, we have no idea whether those dollars will come back. Based on language released by HUD just last week, it is likely that there will be a $180 million funding gap from HUD for funding thousands of permanent supportive housing units that union labor built, by the way, but we don't have the money potentially to fund the vouchers needed to keep those people in their housing. I'm really scared about the future, and I'm really scared about the enormous, I mean, really flabbergasting numbers that I see in front of me, the gaps that we have ahead. These are people that we have already housed, and we will need this money just to keep them in housing. This is not addressing future homelessness in this city, all of which this deal in front of us potentially prevents us from addressing. And what I fear is that we're going to have a beautiful new convention center surrounded by far more homelessness than we have today, which will drive away tourists, which will prevent people from coming here and holding their events here. All of this is happening at a time of incredible uncertainty, and I just want to remind everybody, I know we've heard it, but I want to remind everyone again, the last two FSRs have shown significant softening in our revenue projections. We have enormous liability risk that has not gone away. We can expect to see settlement payouts into the future, partly because of basic services that we have not invested in. Our crumbling sidewalks are leading to enormous liability payments. And when our federal, international diplomatic posture and our federal visa policies could result in even fewer tourists coming, a huge source of our local revenues. When tariffs could increase costs for this project, some of which we are on the hook for, when we are likely to have on the ballot something that will take away $800 million of general fund revenues, when there's a statewide ballot measure that could take out ULA, which is our source for funding for rental relief and rental support in an affordable housing crisis, but not just ULA, it could take away our ability to impose any transfer taxes at all. This is a complicated project. This is an interdepartmental effort. And what I've seen in all this uncertainty is that I don't see certainty from inside the building either. We should have had questions from DWP that were much clearer in the two Budget and Finance hearings that we had already. We should have had those answers months ago. We should have had clarity on who was driving forward the interdepartmental jurisdictional coordination that we needed to get to this moment to have this conversation that we're having today, but we haven't had that. And even if we say today, "Let's find who that coordinator is," it will take us time to find that person, and I don't know where in the city that person is, I don't know where in the public that person is. And I just want to say, this has happened at a time when we've had really significant delays for really basic projects in my district, really basic, because there is no departmental capacity. Where is it going to come from? How are we going to do the enormous tasks that are asked of us by this? The cost of big investments in Los Angeles does not scare me. I dream big for this city. I cheer big investments on, whether it's public housing built by union labor, whether it's a new rail line connecting the valley and the city through this, and the central city through the Sepulveda Pass, also built by union labor. I believe in downtown LA, I want to invest in a new convention center, but we do have an opportunity. We have an opportunity today to pause, to make sure we understand these risks, to understand the context in which we're operating. This is an unprecedented federal environment that we're operating in, that is cutting unprecedented amount of dollars from our local investments. I'm telling you, permanent supportive housing vouchers are gone, Section 8 vouchers could be gone. These are the bedrocks of federal funding for our housing and homelessness system for years. These could be gone. Let's take a moment to ensure that the project that we're investing in for downtown LA, which I 100% believe in and support, ensures our collective success as a city. I don't believe we're doing that today, and I cannot support that as we move forward. It is just not fiscally responsible, it is not the right thing to do for Los Angeles, it is not the right thing to do for residents of Los Angeles, especially the most vulnerable. I also wanted to say that I sincerely appreciate all the voices that we've heard from today, but in my district, I have not heard from a single constituent of Council District Four who has asked me to support this project. But in the time that we were having these discussions, I did receive a number of emails about failing city services and from constituents who are dealing with eviction notices and job loss and desperately seeking the city's help to stay afloat. Moving ahead with this project, both because of the enormous fiscal resources that we'll be committing to it and the departmental resources that we're going to be committing to it, I fear that to all of my constituents, I will not be able to offer that help and support. I hope that's not the case, but I fear that it is based on what I'm seeing today. I want to dream big for LA. I think there is a project that we can put together that accounts for our existing capacity, that accounts for the money that we're likely to get, and that accounts for the incredible losses that our region is sure to face over these next few years. This is not it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla.
That was fast, I thought more people would talk, but okay.
There's going to be plenty of talking, we're good.
So then, don't I go second after everyone's talking?
I'm taking it in the order I got it.
Okay. Well, I want to make a motion that the CAO and the CLA give us quarterly reports to track the local hire compliance and to make sure that in, in the event of a labor shortage, our contractor will use the hiring hall agreement to supplement the workforce. Can I get a second?
Seconded by Councilmember Park, Councilmember Hernandez. All right. Councilmember Price.
Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, today we have a project before us that's been over a decade in the makings, the LA Convention Center Modernization and Expansion Project. Since my first day as a representative of the NUNI, I've worked, in fact, with many of you in here, towards making this project a reality. And 12 years later, we finally have a vote before us. Now, that wouldn't have been possible without the work of so many people, and I want to thank everyone, first of all, who, who's here today, who came out to show their support and who've expressed concerns. Without the strong support of labor and the downtown community, this vote would not be possible. I also want to thank our city departments for your tireless work on this project, especially the CAO, the CLA, and to my council colleagues, especially the council president, who, who's bringing this motion forward, and also the very thoughtful comments from our budget chair, and I appreciated her perspective, and those of my colleagues as well. We've talked about this project for years, we've done the plans, we've done the studies, but there've always been excuses for not moving forward. In the time we debated this project, of course, the costs have continued to increase. And in the meantime, conventions that should have come here have gone elsewhere, jobs that should have been created here have slipped away, and every year we stall, LA loses. We lose revenue, we lose opportunity, and we lose our place as a city that could get things done. Well, folks, I don't think we can afford to wait another decade, we just can't. Yes, we have to be careful with taxpayer dollars, but the truth is, doing nothing is the most expensive choice of all. Inaction has a price, and we're paying it every single day. LA deserves better. Our workers deserve better, our businesses deserve better, our tourism industry deserves better, and our future depends on us doing better. We've studied, we've debated, and we've delayed, but it's time to move forward and to move from talk to action. So I urge you and I vote today on the amended motions before us to move this project forward and to finally create a 21st century world-class convention center that our city so richly deserves. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez.
Colleagues, I've always said I'm a believer in long-term solutions and vision. So, so much of what we fight for, whether it's building affordable housing, expanding unarmed price response, investing in youth, or strengthening tenant protections, all of it takes years to bear fruit. And please, don't praise me when I say this. Today, I'm voting yes on the convention center expansion because I believe Los Angeles deserves to bet on itself. Please, no, I'm not, please, no.
Please, please, folks.
This was a very, this is an incredibly difficult vote, and I don't say that for praise, I say that so you know where I stand. This is probably one of the top three most difficult votes I've taken as a council member, and I don't take it lightly, I'm not looking for praise. For too long, we've looked at our city's future with cynicism. We say it's too expensive, it's too complicated, or too late. Let me tell you how many times, as a council member, we've had to clean up the work of the dereliction of duty that has happened here in City Hall because they have not taken action. So yes, I'm pissed, because we always have to do this, we've been having to clean up messes for a long time. But when we choose optimism and long-term, solutions-oriented thinking, we unlock what's possible. And let me be crystal clear, I expect us and our labor partners to bring this same optimism and fervor to other people in other parts of our city. If this council can rally behind boldness for this project, then I expect us to bring that same energy to protecting city workers, working families, and all communities in the city of Los Angeles. I will not allow for the convention to be a world-class convention center while the rest of the city looks like Gotham City. I will not allow it. I'm voting yes today, but trust and believe, I'm not going to stop fighting like hell for our basic city services, fast city services, clean streets, safe sidewalks, working streetlights. We cannot afford billion-dollar ambitions for business interests while leaving people waiting a year for a streetlight to get fixed. So yes, I'm betting on this project today, but I will told, I will hold every department, every leader, and every budget cycle accountable to making sure the rest of LA is not left behind, because we do that year after year. It takes us 15 years to tree a tree in this city. The industry standard is five years. We didn't get here by accident, we didn't, we're here because we have not invested in those things. And investing in that project means that we will have difficult decisions ahead of us, but the hope that I have and the reason why I'm voting yes... us, but the hope that I have and the reason why I'm voting yes is because I know that there are people around this horseshoe who are incredibly smart, diligent, solutions-oriented, that will do the work to find new money and new revenue, because we can't keep messing with the same general fund revenue. It goes up and down, it doesn't grow, and we will do the work under your leadership, Councilmember Yaroslavski. I know that we will find new money, and it will be OPM, other people's money, because we can't keep putting this on the back of our constituents. And that's why I fought so hard in this budget cycle, and best believe, I will bring that same energy year after year, because I will not let us sacrifice our city workers and our city services. This project is not without risk, but I believe the cost of doing nothing is greater. This is a generational investment. The decisions that we make today will shape the city, our kids will inherit. And I don't want us to be remembered as a council that didn't make the investment into our city. I don't want us to be the council known as not doing the work, because we have been doing the work in cleaning up the dereliction of duty that has been going on here for years. I'm voting yes because I believe in the future of Los Angeles, but colleagues, if we can move mountains for this, then we better not lose our nerve when it comes to housing, tenant protections, city services, city workers, immigrant communities that are being kidnapped right now, and the departments and neighborhoods that have been waiting decades for investment. Boldness cannot be selective, it has to be for everyone in Los Angeles, not just for one interest. You better believe I intend to hold us to the same standard.
Thank you. Councilmember McCosker to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you for your words at the beginning of this discussion, because this is how democracy happens. I think I've said a few times, when we're in the middle of a hot debate, that, man, I love a great debate, and this is, has been the best. Councilmember Yaroslavski, I so respect every single word you said. I understand every risk you've described. I appreciate everything you've brought to this discussion. I remain on the other side, but my deep and abiding respect for you and my commitment to work with you in budget and finance as we move forward is, if you are willing to accept it, is unconditional, is unconditional. Councilmember Park, your leadership on tourism and your commitment to tourism and the tough decision and words you gave today just show how committed you are to your community, and your community includes the wider community of the entire city. I think everything you said, I look forward to supporting your leadership on trade and tourism. Councilmember Padilla, you were right to call out, this is an important moment. We are at 2% on our budget, 2% of our budget is committed to our debt, and we are doubling that to 4%. We have a, and that's important to call out, and it's important that we stay on top of that. We do have a very conservative, appropriately conservative, limit of 6%. And so we have headroom, but we can't pretend like, you know, we can't be a bunch of drunken sailors, pretend like we can do this again. It's gonna be 30 years of buying this, buying this down. Councilmember Hernandez, I even hesitated to speak after hearing everything you said, and I am sorry that I take away from the power of your words by standing up here now. And I think everyone in this room and everyone on this council needs to be committed to the clarion call that you just gave, and I appreciate that very much. I do want to make a couple of very small, but I think important points. We do have 15B, excuse me, 15D in front of us, and one of the things that 15D does, besides correct the numbers and call for approval of the project, it does have an instruction for the city project executive or project manager, and I agree with you, Commissioner Rahman, that everything takes time. And this is a hell of a time for us to get around to doing this, but we do do this, and we need to move quickly, and we need to move expeditiously. It does call for a weekly written or oral update to both the mayor's office and the council office, ensuring full transparency. I appreciate Councilmember Padilla that you called out very expressly the local hire. I think that's critically important, and I think this is also, and I'm going to support your amendment, but I think this is also an opportunity for us on a weekly basis to check in on how it's going and make sure people understand. And this can't be one of these moments where we say, "Hey, check in with us," and keep the council advised, and then six months later, we find out that we're behind schedule or over budget. I think that this discussion tells us that everyone is going to be laser-focused on it. So again, I just thank everybody for their, for their insightful comments, for their intellectual integrity in this conversation, and I'm going to urge that we respect every single comment that was made by every single person, because there is not a single person around this horseshoe that doesn't have the best interests of the community, which includes labor, which includes business, which includes the future, which includes folks that are not, that don't make it to the table because they're underrepresented. And with that, Mr. President, I'm just gonna call the question.
Thank you, Mr. Nazarian. Now, the question has been called. I think, Mr. McCosker, you inspired a couple more people to push their buttons to speak, so I'm gonna call on those folks and then I will go to, go to a vote. Mr. Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. I very much appreciate everything Councilmember McCosker said. In fact, I was writing down notes so that I could address or attempt to address, in all humility, some of the concerns, but he did a phenomenal job. I was also waiting for Mr. Lee to speak before I spoke, because I so appreciate the fact that he took time away from a major life milestone event to be here today. That's how important this was, and I appreciate that. Council President, you actually said it very well when you framed it. This is a critically important decision that we're making, and thank you for setting that right tone. Colleagues, I wrote down two pages of notes that I was gonna read. So I'll condense it to this. I came in here knowing that I'm gonna support this, because I want to double down on the future of Los Angeles. Think of the investment you're making, whether it's buying a home or it's investing in a business. You have trepidation, you have fear, you have concern, you have no idea how you're going to make that big investment, but you know you're gonna finance it over the years. And you know that over the course of the next 30 years, there's gonna be ups and downs, there's gonna be challenges, but you invest in yourself, because you know you're gonna do better over time and be able to continue paying down that debt, maybe even before 30 years are up. If we're not here to believe in ourselves, who's gonna believe in us? If we don't invest in ourselves today, how are we gonna be able to go and ask the major investors around the world to come in and invest in us? Others want to see us invest in ourselves so that they follow suit. There's a money multiplier effect. There's the labor-to-business ecosystem, and there's the reinvesting of ourselves in difficult times. You look at our country's history, whether it was Civil War, right after that Reconstruction Era, First World War, the Great Depression, every single time our, our country has faced devastating times, we've followed up by doubling down on ourselves, not crawling back into a dark space. So I'm not gonna read the rest of these notes, because it's, at this point, foregone conclusion, it seems, from everyone's comment, but I very much appreciate the humility in everyone's voice, and I, I look forward to moving forward with this project. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Jurado, and then we'll start calling votes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I know today, this is a real difficult choice for a lot of us. And I hear a lot of what all of our colleagues have to say about the concerns and the risks, and I, too, go into this with open eyes, but also ones that are very, very critical, but at the same time, trying to be hopeful. Our city has faced a series of difficult decisions and circumstances this past year. But with this convention center, we must take bold action and invest in projects that don't just cost money, but actually make us money, because projects that strengthen our economy, lift up working families, and build strong communities that Angelenos deserve. Because behind this project are people, people we see every day, some of whom are right here with us today. The hotel housekeeper who wants to provide stability for their family, the carpenter who helped build this city, the small business owner who keeps their dream alive while serving their community. You know, I, it's not lost on me that the convention center is an asset that directly benefits some council districts over others. I hear that. But colleagues, I'm committed to making sure that this project is a success, and the decision before us is not unlike any other decision that other cities take on. Other cities that are smaller, their whole economy revolves around the mall, the mall in their town, what is it? The college that's in their town, or even a certain industry. But here in Los Angeles, we have the luxury of not relying on a single industry, because we have a whole host of them. Silicon Beach, tourism, Hollywood, you know, we are union town, but the truth of the matter is those industries are struggling. And like any other city, we need an asset that we can have to anchor our economy, and at the end of the day, our budget, our fiscal problems, our financial problems at this city aren't just about spending, which we're trying to curb and fix and make sure there's accountability of certain departments that are bleeding us dry. And I count on the leadership of our Budget and Finance Committee to make sure that we continue to curb the spending that is needless in the city and draining us. But at the same time, if you don't have enough money coming through the door, it doesn't matter how much spending you curb, you have nothing. And so I think an investment in the convention center helps us to revive, wanna revive our economy and fix our revenue problem, and I'll be happy to lead and work with Councilmember Yaroslavski, Councilmember Hernandez, to think of other revenue generation options that the convention center can lead to and that our city can start doing so that we actually have enough income to make sure we have the city's services throughout the This project is one that's complicated and has a lot of stakeholder support. And for me, it's not just labor, it's not just business, it's also a lot of my constituents. Unlike many of you, I've gotten emails, texts, calls, DMs, every single day since spring about how this is super necessary, and I've kicked the tires with them. And at the end of the day, I'm voting with my constituents, because I do believe in downtown, and a strong downtown with its revenues lower than the expected 30% because of these struggling industries needs this anchor in our communities to make sure we can rise again and rise to the occasion. And so, colleagues, I'm asking for an I-vote on this project, because it's about lifting up the entire city, and if we want a balanced budget in a thriving city, we need to invest. The 30-year mortgage that people buy with the house, they don't have the cash upfront. They put a down payment and a dream and stability of a good union job to make sure that they get to the 30 years, and you know? And at the end of those 30 years, what happens? I know what happened. I became a council member, and there was a $20,000 bill for the roof of our house, which I didn't pay for, I mean, I didn't pay for that house, and now the foundation needs to be fixed, and guess what I have to do? I have to finance it again, to maintain it, to make it better for the next generations behind us. And I believe that this is what our responsibility is, and the time is now, and that's the future we can build if we're willing to invest in it. And so that's why I'm voting yes on the convention center. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, what is before us? Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make this short. I just want to say, Councilman Nazarian, I heard your comments, and I appreciate that. You know, my family, they understand the job that I do, most, most of my family. This, I know that everyone here around this horseshoe was struggling with this project. I, along with all of you, have been weighing the pros and cons of what we are about to invest in and take a look down the road. I've said before, we have an opportunity in the city to highlight the city with the World Cup, the Olympics, where we will be not on a national stage, we will be on a worldwide stage, and this is our opportunity to make this investment and show the world, when they come to visit Los Angeles, that Los Angeles is a city that they want to visit when they go back home and tell people that this is a city that they want to tell other people to come visit. So this is an investment that I know is hard for a lot of people, and I wanted to be here because I wanted to make sure that this was a successful vote because of the union jobs that it creates, the 8,000 jobs, the 1,600 apprentice jobs, all those different things that stimulate our economy with local hiring and people that it's going to affect, but really, all the Angelenos. This is going to be that critical economic engine, not only for downtown, like someone said, but for the entire city of Los Angeles. And for that, colleagues, I urge an I-vote today on this.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, council may now vote on item 15E, and that is motion Padilla, Park, Hernandez.
All right, let's open the roll on 15E as an elephant. Councilmember Yaroslavski, you have, 15E is the local hire.
15E is instruction to CAO, CLA to provide quarterly reports tracking local hiring compliance for the convention center and expansion, and also to instruct CAO and CLA to ensure that in the event of a labor shortage, the contractor will use hiring hall agreement to supplement the workforce.
All right, let's open the roll on that amendment. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 nyes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be motion 15D, and that is motion Harris-Dawson, McCosker, Hutt, Price, Nazarian, Jurado, as with the 15B revisions in the figures.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 nyes, 2 nos.
All right, what's next?
Next would be 15C, and that is motion Jurado-Price, which amends 15D.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tab, do you like the vote?
13 nyes.
All right, what's next?
And would council like this item to go forthwith, sir?
Without objection. Urgent forthwith.
That requires, urgent forthwith requires a vote.
All right, let's open the roll on urgent forthwith. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 nyes.
All right, what's next?
Would council like to adjourn the special motion, I mean, special meeting and reconvene the regular meeting, sir?
Let's adjourn the special meeting and call the roll for the regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
Folks, we've still got business to get through here, and we gotta get Mr. Lee off, so if you can help us, oblige us, and let us go through without applause. Madam Clerk?
Yes, so roll call for the regular meeting, Bloomingville, Harris-Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Jurado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 13 members. Jaroslawski, 13 members present in the court, Mr. President.
All right, what's before us, Madam Clerk?
What is before council at this time is, that would be item 12.
Mr. McCosker?
President, I have an amendment on item 12. Should I, can I just read the amendment into the record? The amendment would be, one, adopt the CAO reports as written, except that recommendations two and three in the August 22, 2025 report shall be amended as follows. Number two, below that, request the city attorney's office to prepare and present a fund ordinance to create new special funds to receive proceeds and record accounting transactions in connection with the Series 2025 Bonds, and to return that ordinance back by September 24, 2025. And then a new three beneath that, request the city attorney's office to prepare and present a lease, leaseback ordinance to approve a lease and sublease between the city and Mikola of certain real properties and improvements thereon in connection with the Series 2025 Bonds, and return that ordinance back by September 24, 2025. And then two, sub-two, note and file the budget and finance report as written.
I'll ask for a second. Second. All right, this has been moved and seconded?
Yes, so, sir, right now, council has before it, that would be 12A, as amended by Mr. McCosker and seconded by Mr. Herr, Council President Harris-Dawson.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
And the next vote?
Councilmember Jaroslawski needs to be recorded as a no vote.
What are we voting on?
Madam Clerk, what's next?
So just for the record, the vote that just occurred now is 12A, and that is motion Harris-Dawson, McCosker, Hutt, Price, seconded by Councilmember Nazarian, as further amended by motion McCosker-Harris-Dawson. Okay, and then-
Okay, so, Councilmembers Roman and Jaroslawski wanna be recorded as no votes?
So just for the record, so 12, this vote is now 12-2.
All right, what's next?
Would, next would be, would-
11-2, we only have 13 people. 11-2.
I'm so sorry, 11-2. It's been a long day. Okay, so it's 11-2. Oh, Mr. President, would council like to take a vote to have 12 go urgent forthwith, sir?
Yes, this is urgent forthwith on item 12 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting referral.
They are posted and referred.
Desk is clear, sir.
All right, we have a few announcements, beginning with Councilmember Hernandez.
Special Transportation and Public Works Committee meeting is canceled for today.
All right, Councilmember McCosker?
A point of order or clarification, what are we doing with item 11?
11, no action was taken on that inasmuch as item 11 was considered in the special meeting as item 15, sir.
So item 11 is, is completed, is disposed?
Yes, 'cause it's a repeat of what happened in the special.
Got it, thank you for that, Mr. McCosker. Mr. Nazarian?
Thank you, Council President. I wanna invite all of you to join me for CD2 Lung Day tomorrow, September 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Our Lady of the Holy Rosary Church on Vineland Avenue. This is a free community health event focused on clean air and healthy lungs. I happen to be asthmatic, so if you are sensitive to winds and various different environmental circumstances, please come in and take advantage of the programs offered, as well as free products. We'll be offering free lung screenings for cancer and COPD, a family asthma management workshop, and important resources on lung health and air quality. There will also be activities for both kids and adults. I'm especially excited to share that we'll also be giving out free air purifiers to help families breathe a little easier at home. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As a fellow asthmatic, Mr. Nazarian, I thank you greatly for that announcement. Mr. Price?
Today, I, as many of you know, Central Avenue Jazz Festival was turning 30 this year, and I can't wait to see you at the, at the event tomorrow. This milestone has really ignited a lot of excitement. The media's been buzzing, and we've been thrilled to be able to share South LA as a gem.
You got Gregory Porter, sorry.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Greg Porter, that's a big deal. Go ahead, sorry.
What makes it special is that it's definitely was free, but it's a community event. It's more than just jazz, it's an experience, where, where kids, families, longtime jazz lovers, even folks who are new to the music can come and have some fun. You'll hear Grammy Award-winning talent, families can take advantage of health screenings, it's a celebration of community as much as is of music. So be there or be square. Make sure that, you know, everyone is invited with this invitation.
Thank you so much.
As you know, tomorrow, starting at 11:00 a.m., 11 to 7:00 p.m., celebrating 30 years of jazz, and it's all free.
All right, Councilmember Jurado?
I wanna invite you all to a very special event, our End of Summer Celebration, happening tomorrow, Saturday, September 20th, from 4:30 to 8:30 at Herman Park. We're lighting up the sky with a spectacular drone show, plus an evening packed with live music, arts, and crafts. Local vendors and family fun is free to, and open to everyone. You don't wanna miss it. We've got it all. You'll be hearing from amazing local talent like DJ Crazy, repping El Sereno, the Always Electric Cumbia Band, Betty's Mustache, and the fabulous 80's cover band, Open for Business. So come out, bring your family and friends, and celebrate the end of the summer with CD14 at Herman Park.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Soto Martinez?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. First of all, I wanna second the Jazz Festival and the new ninth. Been there the last few years. I'm gonna miss it this year, sorry, Councilmember Price, but it's always a great time. For my members of the Civil Rights Committee, we'll start at 2:15, give ourselves a little break between now and then.
All right, any other announcements, members? All right, seeing none, I'll ask everyone in the chambers to rise for adjourned motions. We have Mr. Price with a adjourned motion.
The BS. Colleagues, I ask to be adjourned today in the memory of Prudence Diane Parker Wright, and I'm joined by members of her family. Born in Fairfield, Alabama, 1946, Prudence, effectively known as Prue, moved to Los Angeles as a young woman, seeking opportunity, and went on to dedicate her life to family, community, and service. In 1969, she became one of the very first black women to join the L.A. Police Department, breaking barriers and opening doors for generations to come. She proudly served our city for 32 years, working in multiple divisions, including community relations, where she left a lasting impact by mentoring youth, building neighborhood watch groups, and strengthening bonds between the community and law enforcement. Her service extended beyond law enforcement. She was doubly rooted in her church community, serving as First Lady, Deaconess, minister's wife, and ministry leader in both Los Angeles and New Orleans. She continued her education in biblical studies and mentored others in faith and service. Prudence was also recognized for her humanitarian work. The Prudence D. Wright Humanitarian Award was created in her honor, celebrating her commitment to uplifting others and her unwavering compassion for the community. Above all, she was a devoted mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother, remembered as a woman of God, and a woman of courage, and a woman who lived her convictions. She is survived by her children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, sister, extended family, and countless friends who carry forward her legacy of service, faith, and love. Today, we honor her remarkable life and contributions to Los Angeles and beyond. May her memory be a blessing.
Thank you so much. Any other adjourned motions? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.
Hi, my name is Amanda Charles. I'm the librarian three at Teenscape. Teenscape is the library within Central Library that serves teens and young adults, age 12 to 19. When we opened in 1998, we were the first public library dedicated space for teens. We have over 4,000 square feet of space with a collection of over 30,000 items. We act as ambassadors to the rest of the collection for young adults. There may be some teens who are reluctant to approach a librarian in the art department, they are unaware that they can make an appointment and view materials in special collections, and so, we'll often be the ones to reach out and help make that connection and introduce them to that collection. The item I brought today is, it's a book, it's not rare, it's not unusual. It's called Korematsu v. the United States: World War II Japanese-American Internment Camps. It's part of a series on important Supreme Court decisions. I chose it because the Supreme Court is in the news-